Clock behind you says six o'clock. So, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular select board meeting for the town of Rottland. This is Tuesday, June 4th. It is six o'clock and please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have minutes for the May 21st first select board meeting. As I knew everyone had a chance to review them and is there a motion? Motion is made to approve. Is there a second? Seconded, any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Any board member announcements? Select Board Chair, we're going to do a few things. Scrambling the agenda just a tad tonight. We have a couple of folks here for an appointment. Teresa is here, Teresa Mealy is here to talk about the two personnel things that are further down on our agenda. And there could be other changes as things go on, so. We do also have a request, and let's take this up at the top before I forget it. On your desk is a letter from Howard Burgess, Chair of the Town of Rottland Fire District Number One. He is requesting that the select board announcing the select board has a vacancy in its three-member prudential committee. And he hopes that we will appoint to that vacant position Cynthia Del Bianco. And of course, you know that the fire district is negotiating to have the town of West Rottland take over the water and sewer system. So, this is a probably short-lived position.
Interesting thing.
I didn't realize that was part of our hours, but it sounds fine to me.
It seems to me we've been around on this. Yeah.
It's an interesting thing that that's a separate entity from the town, but we get to approve or appoint a member to their prudential committee.
I think we went through this, I think their bylaws call for it. I question the same thing. And how do they have the authority to have us make an appointment? Usually it's, I thought, an election, but.
But if we would, you would think it would be within their fire district. Because we don't.
Right.
That's right.
But, but, but we've done it before. We appointed somebody the last time, yeah.
Okay.
I believe we did. They asked for us to do this and evidently. And if that's what they want, then I'd want that we appoint Cynthia Del Bianco to fill the vacant position to Fire District One's Prudential Committee.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. That takes care of that. And all right, let's we have two folks here concerning the Otter Creek Communications Union District. Visiting us today are Danielle Muma. Muma, thank you, and Andrew Palmer. And they are interested in being the representative Danielle, the representative, and Andrew, the alternate to the Otter Creek Communications Union District. District period for, and they would be our reps from the town of Rottland.
Wow.
I think that we should.
I think they have a pretty good chance to get.
How long have we been trying to?
Isn't that the proper thing to say?
That we are very grateful for their interest. And is there a motion quickly before they?
Get away?
Yeah.
Smarten up.
I moved, but we appoint them as in order that you stated.
Very good. Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Now, maybe we can hear from them.
Yeah.
There's only one signature, please.
Oh.
Authorized, married aside.
And authorize me to sign on behalf of the board. Okay. Thank you for your interest. Tell us very briefly why you're interested.
Somebody needs to represent Rottland Town.
Thank you. That was pretty brief.
Do you have any particular background or interest in this subject matter or just?
We certainly do, but I don't want to give too much away because my value could be worth a lot and I cannot give that away at this time.
Well, we're about to vote, so.
You're more than welcome to vote now, it's fine.
I've been in line construction for 30 years.
We both have been in the utility industry for 30 years.
Okay.
So, we're familiar with what's going on and I'd like to know what Otter Creek is doing. And I'd like to know what they're doing with CCI.
Okay.
Perfect.
Right?
Okay, so presumably you'll be monitoring whatever interest Rottland Town has in this, which up until now apparently hasn't been much, but because we feel like we've been covered, I think, but.
Looking at their website, I'm not even familiar with what they're doing, so I I have more interest in figuring it out to make sure that what they're doing is going to cover the people appropriately.
Great. So, you'll, you'll come back, report, tell us what the heck's going on.
When I find out, absolutely, because the purpose of this community union district is for, to bring service to rural communities. And so that we don't get hosed by the big conglomerates like Comcast and CCL.
Hey.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. What she said. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor of Danielle Muma and Andrew Palmer as our reps to the Otter Creek Communications Union District and authorizing me to sign, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Cool.
Okay, this goes in the folder. All right. So, you're free to stay or free to go? Your choice.
I'm sure we'll be in touch during the vote form.
Yep.
Okay. And feel free to, the circle, you know, our town newsletter. It's, we're not going to publish in the summer, but in the fall, if you wanted to do a little article in there telling us what they're up to, that would be a great way of communicating to the townsfolk. Okay. Great. Okay, thank you much. Yeah, Bill's, yes, okay.
I don't want to say it.
Okay. Teresa Mealy is here, so we're going to be with her in a moment, but is there anyone else who is not otherwise on the agenda who wishes to address the board? There's no one in the room. And there's no one on the screen who has so indicated, so thank you lots. And we will move to Teresa, come on up here, please. And in your packet, we will be looking at items. D. It's the proposed comp time and paid holiday policies. And you will recall that we had the comp time policy in here at the last meeting. We really should consider the comp time and the holiday policies together. So, we are doing so tonight. The holiday policy is, just, just to fast track it, you, it's the same holidays as the previously, as was previously approved, and it is in our personnel policy, those holidays, but we wanted to. And there was an issue, there was a question, a request that we have Bill circulate the comp time policy among all of the department heads, which I believe he has done. And, but Teresa's also going to comment that she had also reviewed these, the comp policy with all of the department heads as part of her work. She, you will remember she is the consultant we hired to help us with the employee handbook. Bill, did we get anything from any department head?
Not through me.
Okay.
But I have something.
Okay. Okay, but which one is it on, holiday or comp? Okay. What's?
No, they want it. So, I don't have a copy of it, but there's a couple of different examples in there of, like, if you do something and then something, and so I think that the third example.
Are there two examples?
So. Yeah, Bill just gave it. So, there was one example that said if you, if you I guess what I'm trying to say, if you use comp time during the week, you don't get paid overtime, right? So, one of the examples said, like, you ask for eight hours off on Friday. You're authorized eight hours on Friday. You work 75 hours up till Thursday. Then you get then your two-week total is 83.
Right.
Which indicates you're going to get paid three hours of overtime for using comp time, which is not a thing, I don't believe. If that's the way this is going to work, that's insane, but it should be if, if you use comp time anytime during that work week, then you can't get overtime. Because if you work over, over 40 hours, you're going to get, you don't need the comp time.
So.
So, the example in there is misleading, or it says you're going to get paid, you're going to, you're going to submit a timesheet for 83 hours. You're going to get three hours of overtime by using comp time, which is ass backwards.
So, we have to look at work week instead of pay period, because overtime is calculated based on a work week, working more than 40 in a work week, so we have to move away from pay period because that also, to your point, confuses the issue. So, we have to look, to your point, at one week at a time. And what I think you're describing here is that, just like with, I'm taking vacation or sick time, that that time would be at straight time. You wouldn't get that, um, comp time wouldn't be.
Paid 83 hours at straight time?
Straight.
You got to look at it like you you can't.
Well, wait, if you leave the examples alone. Because right above.
I can make this work in my office.
Right above that, there is a sentence, a couple of sentences above. Comp time is earned at a rate of one and a half hours for each hour worked in excess of 40 hours, actually worked in any work week. So, it's intended to be for those excess hours over overtime, which would otherwise be overtime.
That's the calculation for the comp time.
Right.
Right.
Right, that's.
I'm talking about if you, this, this, I mean, right? A full, a full-time employee working 40 hours per week, works 80 hours in a pay period. If an employee is, as requested, has received approval in advance for eight hours of comp time, and that employee works 75 hours in that same pay period, the total hours for the pay period would be 83. So, you're going to pay.
Where are you? That's okay, okay.
83 hours. Yeah. Or using comp time.
Yeah. Well, no, because, well, yeah, so you, you're building.
Now, yours is confused as David.
It worked overtime. To accrue, well, previously.
75 hours.
Obviously, they work overtime in order to accrue the comp time.
Right.
So, accrue comp time at time and a half, and they work the overtime. Then when they take the comp time, you get paid at straight, straight hours, because you get, you're credited at time and a half. You get paid at straight time, so that's why it would be 83 hours at straight time and not overtime.
So, we're going to pay them 83 hours of straight time.
So, what that example, that last example is just describing is that if you take, you, the combination of comp time hours, the combination of hours worked and comp time can exceed the number of working hours in a payroll period. So, all that, that's not saying anything about overtime. That's just saying that if you worked.
But that's, that's confusing, because if you work 75 hours and you ask me on Monday for Friday off on comp time, and I say yes, and you work 75 hours in that two-week pay period, and on Friday you take the day off, you only get paid the five hours, you, you use five comp time hours to get to 80. You don't go to 83.
So, that's a decision that you all get to make when I talked with everyone. What, what I understood, and it can be changed, but this is not about overtime. This is just saying if you.
I just want to say, this example, my guys saw this and went, oh, we're going to get three hours overtime for taking comp time.
Nope. No, this is. I understand.
Cut that off at the knees.
So, do we take out the example? Or examples, plur- plural.
So.
I, no, I don't think you do.
I think you need the example there, because the question is going to come up, and this is, this last example is not about overtime. This is simply saying that you're not capping the number of hours worked and comp time at 80 in a pay period. You're just saying that, hey, if you ask for eight hours of comp time, and you've worked 75, you will get paid for 83 hours. You're, you're saying as a town, we're not going to reduce your request of eight hours to five to make it 80. We are going to pay out 83 hours. This, this example is relative to the statement above about the combination of hours worked and comp time. It is not about overtime. That's where the confusion is, and I understand what you're saying. But what they're using, this example, they're reverting back to how comp time or how overtime is calculated. So, 83 hours in a pay period, given this example, is just that you're letting them use more of their comp time. You're going to pay them more than 80 in that pay period.
But there but it is at the rate of straight time, not overtime. None of it is overtime? Because I think that's what the confusion is.
Yeah.
So, maybe what we can.
Yeah. It's.
We.
The way, so the issue I'm seeing is that's if that gets written down, that could be overseen during payroll. And by no fault of anybody, just, oh, yep, 83 hours, they got three hours overtime and.
Yeah, you're right.
But when you're, right, but when.
You work 80 hours in a two-week pay period. Anything over that is overtime.
Right.
We're talking apples and oranges, though. I understand that maybe there's a better way to give an example, but we're talking apples and oranges. Because overtime is going to be calculated based on the number of hours worked, oh, worked over 40 in a work week. What we're talking about here is in the pay period. You're looking puzzled, Dave. Where did I lose you? Overtime, forget comp time. Overtime is earned in a work week. That's the law.
Okay, so if you work 45 hours.
In a work week.
This week.
Yep.
And then next week, you work 35 hours, you turn in a pay, a timesheet for 80 hours.
Five of it's going to be overtime. Because 45 hours, that five hours in work week number one, those overtime has to be awarded in the week it is worked. You just happen to be paid bi-weekly. Right? So, in the example you've given, good example, 40 is straight time, five is overtime. The following week, work week two, is 35 hours of straight time. So, in that following week, let's pretend the person asked for eight hours of comp time. All you're saying is, we're not going to say to you, you were capping the amount of time we're going to pay you in your paycheck at five. We're going to let you take all eight hours. We're going to pay you all eight hours. We're not going to say you have to limit it to five to make up 80 hours in a pay period. We are going to allow you to get paid out for the full eight hours.
In fact, we would be buying down their contract.
We're buying, yes. And the reason that, when we had the discussion, and I know it's been a while, the reason that you were choosing not to cap it is exactly what Matt said. So, you can buy down the comp time and not carry big, even though you don't have a big comp time accumulation. It allows you to buy down comp time over town, overtime, which helps everyone out budgetarily. You don't have to do it that way. You can change your mind, but that was the intent.
Department heads under this also have discretion as to whether to do that, right?
Pardon me?
The department heads also have discretion as to whether to approve use of comp time and to buy down of comp time.
You have to follow your policy, so if you're going to allow it to exceed the 80 hours in a pay period, you don't want to be making exceptions. Yes, the department heads are always going to have the discretion, because the policy says they need to have discretion. And it needs to comp time needs to be approved, I believe the language in the law, and in your policy says within a reasonable time, and as long as it's not interfering with business operation, with town operation. But I would not recommend that you have in your policy that it can exceed 80 hours in a pay period, and then turn around and have people making different decisions, because now you have inconsistent practices, and that's where things go sideways.
So, if you look at the next to the last paragraph sentence, really, on the last page, under payout, it says, "An employee receiving payment for accrued comp time will be paid at the regular rate of pay." So, if the example that you gave, those extra three hours, he wants to be paid, but he's going to only be paid straight time for those additional three hours. Right?
Yes, because you're.
So, payout is different from accumulating.
Yes.
You might realize this and decide, yeah, I'll only count five of my comp hours this week and hang on to the rest and do something differently later.
The bottom line is, it's, we owe them that, because they've accrued, they've earned and accrued.
Right.
And, but there's reason we've capped it at 40, so this doesn't get out of control. You're only going to it's five days worth of time.
And that's what Mary said is a good distinction. So, the way comp time is earned, as you know, is at time and a half. So, if they have earned overtime in that work week, it's going to be at time and a half. The choice your employees get to make is, do I want it in my paycheck? Or do I want it assigned to my comp time bank? So, and then when it's paid out, it's paid out as you just described. It's been a while. Are you, does that make sense, kind of?
Doesn't, but I mean, I get, I get what you're saying. I just, I guess I'm falling back on my other life, and it was totally different than this.
I think my other life, you know, only left, did whatever you had.
It capped.
Right.
Yeah.
You can use comp time, but you just couldn't go over.
Over the.
The year, a good extra, you got paid off that.
Yes, yes.
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 And the same thing is true of vacation policy, policies, sick time policies. Employers have the ability to say, no, we're capping it to the total number of hours in the pay period. That's all we're going to let you take, or, yes, we'll let you exceed the number of hours in the pay period when we're looking at hours worked, and whether it's vacation time, sick time, or comp time.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No, but those two departments right there are the ones that are going to have the most influence on this. After those guys work an 80-hour pay period, and then March 23rd, they're in the trucks for 20 hours on a Saturday after they've already worked two weeks. That's where, that's why I think for you, Dave, this is very, you know, because highway is the ones that are going to work the extra hours. And police, things just show up unexpected. Almost everybody else's overtime is due to something just went wacky one day, but so for them to understand this clearly is very important, because he's got to make his guys understand how this is going to work, because I'm reading it. And, you know, I've read it a little bit, and I'm still really confused, but.
Well, part of, part of this, I mean, we would want the board clearly and department heads to understand what you're agreeing to, right? Because if you don't, then you probably shouldn't be approving it. But the other part of that, too, is walking through this and training your employees to your comp time policy. So, you know, that is something that we would partner on doing together, so that there is that kind of understanding. And there is at some point where you can only describe it so much in writing, and, you know, you need to walk through it, and they'll see it on their paychecks. It'll make, or not on their paychecks, excuse me. But when they're having a timesheet at the same time you have your policy, I think will also be very helpful, because there is a line on the timesheet that's going to say, I want my overtime to be converted, or I want my overtime to be overtime, and that will help with this as well.
All right.
Well, let me, let me ask this. Would it behoove you to have Teresa come in and talk with your fellows and answer their questions, so that they understand that you understand and she understands, instead of waiting for somebody to blow their top and say, I didn't get paid for this, or I don't want to. I just think it would behoove you to meet with Teresa and your staff, if that sounds reasonable to you.
That actually is what I had planned as well, because we really, we have new timesheets that we're going to be implementing. Once his policy is approved, we've got the comp time on the timesheet, and they really do go hand in hand. And I agree, you know, we want to make sure that you feel comfortable. And it's, it's a new, it's a new policy, it's a new process. So, people are going to be a bit unfamiliar, and it's going to take a couple of times. And you certainly always have, you know, me to reach out to and say, hey, we're stuck on something. We can't kind of remember, or we aren't quite sure about the mechanics of this. Can you help us? And certainly Carrie and Susan both are aware of the comp time policy as well as the new timesheet. So, it's kind of a, it's a group effort, and we would go over this as department heads first. And then we'd do a training like we did on the timesheets. Well, it's been a while. I mean, it's been quite a few months, right, since we first went over this? So, I, I appreciate that you would have questions about it.
Any other questions about comp time? The comp time policy? Okay, let's turn to the paid holidays policy. And again, the holidays themselves were one set in the previous personnel policy. It's just how holidays are observed and holiday leave pay. Do you want to do a real quick?
Sure. So, it's expanding the policy, because some of what the department heads were running into is different ways of working with the holiday policy. And one of the nice things that has been added to the holiday policy is allowing, if you look at the bullet number four, paperworking a holiday, that employees across departments will now have a choice of being paid at the rate of one and a half times their regular way to, rate of pay, which was your previous policy, so there's no change there. But one of the nice things that, that the Police Department employees were favorable about, and Dave wanted to offer this as well to the Highway Department, is that they could choose to take a floating holiday instead of being paid at time and a half. So, it's, it's a win-win for everybody. Employees get a choice. It's been working well. It just wasn't captured in writing. And just a little bit more detail, as Mary said, about, okay, what happens if you don't work a holiday? What if you're not scheduled on a holiday? What if your shift is longer than the eight hours? What, you know, how does that work? So, it's, it is detailing or outlining and capturing some of the structure that was missing before that was causing a lot of questions. And again, you know, the intent here is to be consistent in our practices and take as much guesswork out so that payroll doesn't struggle as much, and the department heads are able to easily sign up on timesheets, and everybody's on the same page. And the department heads are able to easily sign up on timesheets and everybody's on the same page.
Questions from the board or comments?
So the last sentence in number four, and I'm not sure if I'm reading something wrong or what, but it says, floating holidays do carry over into the next fiscal year and must be used or will be lost.
Oh.
It's supposed to say do not.
Kind of contradictory, isn't it?
Yep, there's a not missing.
It's either they don't carry over or they do, but you can't have it both ways. So the way, the way this reads, it says that floating holidays do carry over, excuse me, into the next fiscal year. Okay, so if they do carry over, then they won't be lost.
They must be used in that fiscal year, and if they are not used in that fiscal year, they're lost.
So then they should say do not carry over.
Missing the word not.
Not is not in the sentence.
They do not carry over.
Right. No, they do carry over into the next fiscal year.
Then they're not lost.
If you.
You can't have it both ways, dear. It's got to be one or the other.
And I think we did the not because keeping track of the floating holidays would be kind of a difficult thing to do.
You can accrue sick days up to thirty. Yeah, so it's got to say do not carry over.
Well, then that's different than the original intent. So if you have holidays in this fiscal year.
Yep.
And employees don't get a chance to use them because of scheduling, which sometimes can happen.
This is floating holidays.
Floating holidays.
Floating holidays, not the regular holidays. So.
No, floating holiday.
Right, so that, and if I understand right, you, the floating holiday is payment for working on a holiday. And then you can take a floating day as compensation, right?
Yes.
Right, so.
Instead of compensation.
So it can't be both ways. It can't be that you can carry them over or you're going to lose them. It can't, you either, it's gotta, it's gotta be one way or the other. If it's going to be carried over, you don't, it's, our people earned on their sick days, they can carry up to thirty. So if they don't use any sick days, they can carry thirty. After three years and then, then they lose, you have to take some sick days, they're going to lose ten. So this has got, either got to say floating holidays carry over into the next fiscal year. And then that's the end of it.
And I think when we talked about this, Mary and I wanted, wanted it to not carry over.
Right, which is fine.
Because it really, in my view, there's no reason why if you.
You don't need to accrue holidays.
Shouldn't have to accrue, I mean.
Yeah, I should say.
I guess you'd get like, the fifteenth, Memorial Day coming near the end of the fiscal year, but other than that.
So in other words, if employees, because when I talked with the department heads, they wanted it to carry over because they didn't want, they wanted the flexibility of employees who may have floating hol, they may have a holiday towards the end of the fiscal year that they haven't been able to use. And if they're not able to grant them that holiday off, they're going to lose it in the same fiscal year. So the intent, the original intent was that the floating holidays would carry over into the next fiscal year. And they had to be used in that next fiscal year. If they didn't use them, they would not carry over to the following fiscal year. So that's what that's.
And it needs to say that.
It needs to say that.
Then we can.
It needs to say it just like that.
Okay.
Is that your understanding of what the employees were requesting? Some ability to carry a floating holiday over to the next fiscal year, but not beyond?
Yes, for me, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not, that's not really an issue for me.
Okay, well, you haven't used them yet, I think, yeah.
Sometimes using their time, if we wanted to use it, there'd be nobody working for the last three weeks of the year or something.
Yeah, but we're only talking about, we're only talking about floating holidays for this, so.
Yeah.
It's a scheduling thing.
Okay, so my suggestion on that one.
How many hours are in the floating holidays? How many days we have? Ten?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Eight hours of the thing.
Yeah.
And I think that's what you have been doing and there haven't been any difficulties with that that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Do we have floating holidays?
I mean, last, last year, we did the policy, so.
It might have been unofficially done.
A lot of time.
Didn't we give, didn't we give the employees the option of taking one of these days or their birthday?
But that was.
That was the Juneteenth.
Yes.
Holidays or what was it? I mean, the part of, part of the reason of having it not carry over is to encourage that it be used and not continually accumulate because otherwise the problem only gets worse and worse.
Floating holidays can be carried over.
You also have a choice of being paid time and a half.
You can carry over a certain number of hours all this per year.
That's what, that's what the intent of what was originally here is. And as far as tracking this, I'll be working with Nemrick because the floating holidays should be tracked separately from your vacation and your sick time.
So does that system track, like if you take it, you carry over from year one to year two that, in year two, does it know that it's a year one day that's going to expire?
Your policy is what Nemrick would follow to set those parameters up.
So.
When I worked for the city, we had that, we, we could carry over comp time. And they had, I think they were like one twenty or something, so you could carry that over and the system knew.
So it knows which, it knows which hours are from which year.
You get a maximum and then once you reach that maximum, it won't exceed it, right?
Well.
Certain number of hours to be carried over the following year.
Yeah.
Anything over that.
Right. And it must be used in that next year.
But my point is, the system is going to know what the carryover hours are, so like Kerry doesn't have to keep track of this. Because it seems like.
Putting a lot of faith in a mechanic, in a.
Just the present policy has nothing about floating holidays. It does have time and a half, pay compensation if you work a holiday.
Right.
So we're trying to give you something that the department heads expressed that their employees wanted. And we're just trying to figure out the best way of doing it.
And, and I think for you, Ed and Dave, you two are the ones where your jobs may require you to work Memorial Day or Christmas.
Christmas.
Well, I'm going to be lonely on Juneteenth.
Yeah.
Two guys work their birthdays because of snow, so.
So the, the committee, I suppose, should make a change on number four.
Okay.
Just clarify.
Well, let's, we're trying to get this done today. So let me, do you have suggested language or do you want me to talk?
I think we're a committee of the whole at this point.
We are.
Just, first of all, why don't, why don't I make a motion that we adopt both of these? And then if it's seconded, we can discuss an amendment.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Motion seconded to adopt both the paid holidays and the compensatory time policies as presented. All right, and are there any amendments?
Or discussion that we could really do now?
That's.
Yeah.
All of that.
Just saying, if you're going to, if, if we're going to put a one-year limit on the floating holidays, is that might, what I understand is the intent?
But that's what we thought the intent was, but Teresa's suggesting it was originally.
Ed, what do you want? What are you thinking? That, that if you carry over a floating holiday, they just don't ever go away and you have them?
No, not like forever, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Fiscal, another fiscal year, you should be able to.
And I'm fine with that if Nemrick can be set up to track it, so it doesn't become another thing that Kerry has to keep track of.
So suggested change on the last sentence of paid holidays. Floating holidays do carry over into the next fiscal year and must be used in that fiscal year or will be lost.
But they can be used in the current fiscal year or the next fiscal year.
And then, then they lose.
Everybody understand that?
Um, yes. Matt just made that motion to amend his motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we'll take that amendment first. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we're on the main motion, which is adopting comp time policy and paid holidays policy. Is there any further discussion? deletions, amendments?
So just, the comp time is earned at one and a half hours per hour of overtime, right?
One and a half times.
One and a half times, basically.
Their pay rate.
Right, basically one and a half hours.
Yep.
But it's paid out at the regular hourly rate. So if you have, if you work twenty hours overtime, you get thirty hours of comp time and that thirty hours is paid out at your regular rate.
Yes.
Okay.
Because how it's, because you've already been awarded.
Yep.
Because you already have been awarded that time and a half when you earned it.
Right.
Right.
So you just, you just end up, so if you work twenty hours, you could actually take thirty hours off. Thirty regular hours off. You work twenty hours overtime. So your guys have the option to do that, whether they get paid for following a weekend or if they would, or Ed's got to be at the Cortina keeping company with all those folks. You can do it. You guys okay with that?
Yes.
All right, then you understand how, all right. Because like I say, those are the two departments this has gone off.
Absolutely.
So do we need to amend this for Dave's question or no? They don't really care either way.
I think that it, you'll be able to figure out that.
Yeah, I mean, I, my brain was, like I said, I was a mile and a half that way.
Right, so but one of the things that, I think that goes with this, so because we do a bi-weekly paycheck, that overtime is earned in a single week, as you pointed out. So you're, everybody here gets paid every two weeks, but if you guys are out winter or even this time of year, if something happens and then, and you're working two, three hours extra a couple of days, you know, trees come down or something. At the end of that one week, now, I've heard some issues with Nemrick, with different things, with payroll deductions and social security and some problems that some of our employees are facing. Will that automatically track that? So what they've put, his employees put down that they worked forty-five hours week one and they worked forty hours or thirty-five hours, say they worked thirty-five hours the second week. Does that system smart enough to know that that first week, there's five hours overtime?
So my understanding, this is not a Nemrick thing.
Okay.
My understanding, because I did check on that, is that when timesheets are completed, so you do week one and week two, the employees sign off on week one, Dave and Ed and the department heads approve that. They then do their timesheet for work week two. That's approved, it's submitted to payroll.
Yep.
Payroll systems, because you're paying bi-weekly, what Kerry would be doing is putting in the total number of straight hours, straight time, eighty, and the number of overtime hours. If you wanted to find out when employees worked overtime in a work week, you must go back to your record-keeping system, which is going to be the timesheet.
So.
So Nemrick is not, it is not, if you were paying weekly.
Yep.
And Nemrick would set it up so that weekly payroll would show overtime in each week worked. You do bi-weekly. So payroll systems, when the time is entered, the payroll system is going to be a time entered for the pay period, which will include your stray hours and your overtime hours. So that's a manual entry by Kerry in this example.
So do your, do your guys do a timesheet every week? Okay, so they don't do a time week, they're not doing them every other week. They do them every week. Okay, so it's clearly.
Try to do them every day just because.
You'll forget.
What did I do last Tuesday?
Does, does the Nemrick system track the accrued comp time or is that something we have to do separately?
I've never got, I've never had a paycheck. I've never worked for somebody, so I don't.
Matt just asked a question.
Um, when I spoke with Nemrick, what Cynthia explained to me is that they, that you already have the capability within the system that you purchased. They just need to set up the tracking of vacation, sick time, comp time, floating holiday that, and it's going to be based on whatever your policy says. So she assured me that they do this for other towns and that they do have that, your system does have that capability.
Any other discussion, amendments, additions, deletions to the two policies under consideration? Ready for the vote? If so, all in favor of adopting compensatory time and paid holidays time policy, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, oh, do, do we need to do the effective date as of July first?
I actually, oh, yes.
That was in my motion. I'm pretty sure y'all heard that.
Yeah, it was in there.
Okay, that was in the motion, right. Okay, good. Okay, so as of July first, these will take effect. Good, thank you.
I'm sure we'll see you again soon.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. All right. I think we are now, I think we've, we've hopped a bit, but now Larry Dalvanary, Town Transfer Station Manager and action, under action items, board to discuss purchase of a trailer for the transfer station generator. That's a.
Yes, okay. So this all came to light when Dave took the generator from the fire station and dumped my generator up there at the transfer station.
Yeah.
It sat there and I knew, what the hell am I going to do with this thing? So it came up, let's put a building out there next to it so we can hook it up to the building. And I got some prices on that. And I was looking at it, eight by ten building. So just looking at that and asking my contractors and stuff, they said about six thousand dollars, but you have to have louvers put in that thing. So when that thing starts, these louvers open up and let the fresh air in there. We don't know how much it's going to cost until we get the louvers. So looking at it and everything else like that, I, I studied it quite a bit. On your, the easiest thing would be to put it on a trailer and when you need it, you pull it out, plug it in. We'd already spent all the money on the the transfer switches for the boxes and stuff like that, and the, and the big plugs and stuff like that. We spent good money on that. So that was my idea. If you guys have another idea, I'm willing to listen.
Do we have any idea how much a trailer would cost?
Okay, right now, I'm in a process of getting this generator weighed. See how much it weighs.
Okay.
Okay, we heard, I've heard from fifteen hundred pounds to maybe two thousand pounds, so a ton. So I can get a trailer.
You can weigh it.
For about.
Pick it up with the loader.
Pardon?
Dave can weigh it.
Can weigh it.
Yes, Dave can weigh.
Don't drop it.
That's how it get, that's how it was moved. It was moved with the loader and, and a little history on the generator. This generator was donated to the town by Velco. They were putting in a much bigger unit. This built, this generator was tucked into the middle of that building. The louvers do exist for it, but it's just a lot more mechanical stuff to worry about. So it sat at the fire station for several years. We didn't really, it was a three-phase generator and it, we weren't sure, get it hooked up. The department decided to put in a standby generator, so they did. This generator made its way to the town garage. Byron took the time to get an electrician in. They set it up with a fuel tank, they set it up with the necessary switches. It's been a pretty long skid. And the plan was anytime it was needed at highway, they'd fire up the loader, drag it outside and plug it in. And that works great. Or if they, if Larry needed it, they could do that. The problem is Larry's open Saturdays and highway usually doesn't work. So now we got to get somebody to come and get the loader and move this thing. So put it on a trailer, they can hook it to one of the pickups, pull it out of the storage areas underneath, put it outdoors. There will be, the other thing is you don't want this thing running in that transfer station when people are in there because it's loud and it's noisy. So pick it outside, leave it on the trailer, have it mounted. The beauty of the putting it on the trailer, if for some reason it was needed somewhere else, this could power one of our pumping stations in an emergency. if for some reason it was needed somewhere else, this could power one of our pumping stations in an emergency. It will run both single and three-phase, the way it's set up. So.
Some of the, I'm pretty sure some of the pump stations are already set up with a plug.
Yeah.
For, for that generator.
So to that note, if I think there's money in Larry's account, I'd make a motion, we allow him to buy a trailer.
I second it.
Motion's made and seconded to purchase the trailer.
We need some pricing.
Yeah, I think we probably need.
Right.
So, and then struck Larry to get some numbers.
I think he already had it. Okay, here's the next problem. I'm at the end of the, my budget here. If I can get a trailer quick enough, could I get Carrie to cut a check for that?
How much?
Right now, no more than three thousand.
And do you have that money?
I have that money there. That's what I actually have.
Is part of the transfer station.
Yes, I got it right here, dear. I have three thousand in, let me see. Building maintenance. Maintenance. I have three thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars in that account.
So the, so the motion includes
I'm.
Not to exceed.
Whatever, yeah.
Three thousand. Three thousand and money to come from the transfer station maintenance line.
Right. Cause you got two places you're gonna look, either Home Depot or Tractor Supply. No, I won't really know anything until I get this thing weighed, to exactly know what it weighs. Dave offered to help me out. I think most of those single axles are good for a ton. The, the one I have at home is twelve by, six by twelve and it's rated for two thousand pounds. Yeah. The one I'm looking at is twenty-three hundred dollars and it's twenty-nine hundred pounds also, so. But I wanna make sure that thing is no more than. Soon can you weigh that? Two thousand pounds.
Tomorrow, that's how, with the loader, that's how we got it to where it is now.
Right, yeah. Got the, that's got the weight box.
Turn the scale on it.
Yeah. That'll give you a pretty good idea. I don't think it would weigh more than a ton.
I can't. I, I figured.
I think I said it in, I said it in the, in the station. I unloaded it with a loader backhoe. Like Dave said, there's no tin in that one.
No.
No, that's a rugged thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So motion's been made and seconded to authorize the purchase of a trailer for the generator at the transfer station. Cost of the trailer not to exceed three thousand dollars and money to come from the maintenance line at the transfer station budget.
And I have.
Other discussion. If not.
Do you have further discussion?
Yeah. That's if I can get a check from Carrie. I don't know if that's legal or not.
Well, if we authorize it tonight, she does pay in another couple of weeks, all in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
So you, you gotta.
Okay, just long as I'm not getting her in any hot water.
If we have to like re-approve it as part of the orders.
If, depending on where you buy it, the town has a credit card. Can. It does, but it wouldn't get back here until after.
Sure we have enough limit on any card to do that.
I mean, if you buy it from Home Depot. I, that's where I'm gonna get it. That's where I'm planning to get it from. We don't have a Home Depot card, but I do. All of us do. But that Home Depot card is no good for me, cause I won't get the bill until July.
Right. Well, you can get, Dell, you can get the receipt from the purchase and use that and don't worry about the bill. You can use the receipt to pay the bill.
Right. You'll, when you, when you buy that, if you, if you put it on a credit card, they're gonna give you a ticket. That ticket can go to Carrie. She can cut the check through the next meeting and then when the bill comes due, if you put it on your own personal card. I mean, that's, sometimes that maybe.
Probably not good policy.
Not the best, but we have a Home Depot.
Okay.
Card scan. Card.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
If we have a Home Depot card.
We haven't voted on the motion yet.
I think we already spent the money, but.
I think we spent the money, but we haven't voted on the motion. Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Okay.
Anything else? For me.
You were the one here spending money. No. Oh, yeah, the table.
Yeah.
Yeah, the table.
Okay.
Is the table.
The reason that table was taken down. People were putting inappropriate stuff on the table. And they were putting stuff on the table that was no good. And the town has to get rid of that stuff.
That's fine.
It's okay with you, dear.
Well, you just throw him a compactor, right?
Yeah. I mean, are we talking tons and tons of things or the occasional?
They're little things, but you know, they're taking, some people take advantage of stuff.
Well, are you there? I mean, you guys are mostly there. You mean, people.
We're all over that place.
Put things in there and walk away and you don't notice it until they're gone. Okay.
Yes. And the inappropriate stuff was, I have a lot of kids that went to that table.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank God.
A little sign up. Yeah, okay, just put a little sign up.
Mary, people don't read. Lord, he's got signs all over. Signs up all over that place. And, and you're still, you're still following them around, don't you? Yes.
Yes.
I still follow them around, yes. Humane nature. I, I would love to put that table back up there. If, if you guys are behind it.
I think you should. It, it gives people a chance to recycle some stuff, but a caution, people, don't put inappropriate material on there. Throw it away and don't put stuff that's crappy and in bad repair. Throw it away.
Yeah.
Sorry, we have a dump.
Not like that.
Your transfer station.
Right. And they're right there. Guess where they could dump it?
Got money to do that.
Well, that's right.
Think how much stuff we can pull out of the brush pile.
Oh, I would, because I did green up day on Creek Road and I know how crappy it was, so, yeah.
To let you know, green up day, we took in a hundred and forty-seven bags.
Wow, okay.
So. Hazardous waste day. We shipped away ten ton, or ten thousand pounds.
Okay.
Free of five.
Yeah. Good, good, good. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I like them for perks. Thanks, Ray.
Okay, next on the agenda, Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Official good evening now.
Hey, Dave.
Talking half the night. Um, not really a lot. Tried to get this over quickly. Um, one day last week, we rebuilt the culvert inlet and the head wall on Sunset Drive. We held some stone for, on that terrace project that we got coming up. Spent quite a bit of time last week or so, uh, cleaning up after the post road paving, doing edges and all of that stuff.
Um, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, we painted the intersection yesterday. Uh, it's where's intersection, as we affectionately refer to it now. He's pretty much adopted it. Today, we went to, uh, Deborah Drive and David Road and we replaced one culvert and did away with an unnecessary culvert. It was just a, it was it was a culvert that was put in apparently when they built the house and there's no ditching anywhere else. And it rose to the surface. It was pretty amazing, really.
Yeah.
So we, that just all went away. We gotta get back in there, um, when the weather's decent and pave those. I wanna try to put together a couple of different paving projects for a day, so we don't just do one or two, but. And then, uh, just as a kind of a side note, I did get preliminary approval from V Trans for the class two paving grant for this year. It's not official yet, but uh, they did recommend it to wherever it goes from District Three to wherever it goes, so.
Has it ever been denied?
Was denied last year.
Really?
Yeah.
All right, so it's our turn to get it.
It's our turn, yeah.
Okay.
And that's where we are. Two things from meetings. The Simons Avenue Route Four intersection, do we need to get somebody to meet with us to look at that, to try to reconfigure that, to do something about the cars zipping right up through?
I suppose we can try. I don't know. I mean, we were talking about getting.
Have to get Gouetz involved, because however, that'll be reshaped to a T, so cars have to actually stop.
Yep.
Or make a right turn. So it'd be, that's the only way to slow them down. And, and we keep talking, we haven't done anything. And then I can't remember what we needed to do following our discussion at the Green Mountain Plaza. Traffic study? The one we have is not.
I have a preliminary discussion with the Regional Planning Commission. They are, they are, they would be as they say, willing. They, they would be the resource to help us get it done.
Okay.
They, they've got some projects, but they, they are aware of it, so I, I gotta go back with them next week, so.
Okay. Cause I'm, I'm not sure why a traffic study would be involved, but that was one of the things that was brought up, because we're not changing any tra, we're changing the pattern, but not the full of traffic.
Right.
The same number of cars.
We're gonna need the investment from the state for the traffic light.
Right.
So there's gonna be a new arm, a new light, some work there, so.
Yeah, to have the proper number of lights for the proper number of lanes.
Right.
Unlike other places.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we can go up on Route Four and take one of those, cause there's one extra light there and there's an extra one on Strong Avenue.
Yeah. Yeah, we robbed some of those.
Three lights for two lanes. I don't understand it, because it confuses the daylights out of that.
Yeah.
Those are my two questions. So, um, I don't know if that guy we had here when we talked about the Green Mountain Plaza, if he'd be the resource we need to talk to.
Probably. He sounded like he's took over for this area, so.
So maybe we need to talk with him, see what he says, and then we can schedule a meeting.
Yeah.
On a rainy day.
Yep. Also, I've also been asked while we're doing that, if they do the traffic light reconfiguring, to have them add preemption to that.
Yeah.
For the, for emergency services.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That one doesn't have preemption.
Really?
Coal River does, Windcrest.
Um, that's an oops.
Yeah, all the other ones, Hannaford's doesn't.
Yeah.
That's the one that doesn't have it. And they were trying to, we were trying to get it. The Clarence Fire Department was trying to get it put on there, because when we come down through out of the city, that's kind of a hairy intersection.
Yeah.
All the, all the new ones are up to comp now. They're no, no worse now.
No, they're all up to comps. We're, we're outfitting all of our trucks with them now.
Yep.
Matt has something.
So I guess something to file away for ten years from now, but I, I got, I did get a citizen comment that, uh, the paving of Post Road that maybe wait until after school's out to do it.
We had to get it done, we had to get it done in the fiscal year, though. It was, it was money that was kicked back to us from V Trans for, uh, Town Line Road. Windows only so big.
Yep.
Under normal conditions, you, yeah, the kids had some entertainment for what, day or two?
Yep, made it work.
Yeah.
A couple of days.
See, end of school year, they all wanna go home. They don't wanna be there.
Nope.
So.
Any, anybody have anything else here?
So I see a highlighted thing here about a highway department truck for sale.
Okay.
Suddenly, I understand the color coding.
Or to open bids for highway department truck office for sale.
The color coordinator thinks. I, I have told just about everybody, everybody I could think of.
Have all of them on your desk.
Yeah.
I don't seem to have any.
So at this point, would it be okay to go talk to some folks and see if they're interested, seeing as though we've gotten nowhere?
Is this the second time we went out?
Second time, second time, yeah.
I, I, we, we heavily advertise this.
We have, or we, we send it to Berlin, put it through the state auction.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
If you wanna trade it.
They just had it.
If we just put it out here with a sign.
I think you have another one in the fall.
Uh, maybe, I'm not sure, but.
Thought they were up to. Where, where, is it inside now or outside?
It's outside.
So it's not taking up any additional, I just thinking that, um.
Put it at the transfer station. Right there at, uh, you know.
On the tape. You know what I wanna say? You wanna buy an excavator for the town? I would go up and talk to Gardner. We have a truck. What do you think? Yes, no? I mean, I'm, that's the way I would.
Yeah, but.
I don't know trucks. It's got some value, right?
It's, it's with a new sander, one year, abused. The body's a little tough, but with a new body on that truck or even some work, that's a, that's a ten or fifteen thousand dollar truck.
So I went online, I went on the NADA and, uh, I did low book on it. And I didn't really include the, the sander and the plow, just the truck itself. For what it is, low book was thirteen. So that's when we listed, the first time we put a minimum on it of thirteen and got nothing. So then we put it out again this time with no minimum, and we still got nothing.
I know two people that seemed like they were interested. I gave them all of the information, but obviously they didn't wanna bid it.
Yeah, I talked to somebody that was gonna put a bid in on it too, but.
Yeah, so I, I don't understand. I mean, I've talked to several people. I mean, that's just a thought. I mean, I don't know if that is something we could do, um. I don't know what the board thinks.
Let me think on this.
Might be worth parking it out here and put a for sale sign, see what somebody.
Bring it to the farm and park it there and put a for sale sign on it, or they won't.
Move it around.
Once a week.
Every week.
Put down the soccer field.
Joey's, you could put it up on our.
Mary's got a spot on Kirk Road.
Or on East Pittsburgh Road.
The answer. I mean, I don't know. Because you can't put a for sale sign where it is, cause you and the other three guys, soccer players, you don't see it.
Pretty much.
So if you, if you wanna try that, you're more than welcome to bring it to the.
Raffle it off of the townwide celebration.
We'd have to sell.
Trying to think of, yeah, maybe we could just have, if it's still around.
Wanna sell about a thousand tickets for a hundred bucks a ticket.
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
We could sell a thousand. I mean, I'd probably buy a couple of them. No, I can't bid it. We can't, because that would look like.
Matt and I had experience running a raffle for, you know.
I'd have Rose buy the tickets.
Rose is very lucky once he buys raffle tickets.
I don't know, but.
So.
You wanna try that route?
Suggestions, yeah.
I mean, we look at some different avenues.
I, I will mention this again to two folks. I mean, if you, I, I think that you could probably talk to Gardner. He probably might be interested in just buying it out, right? At this point.
Yeah.
I mean, it, but.
Yeah, I have a feeling I know what Gardner would offer for it.
Well, the, we don't have to accept that.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
He wants to buy low and.
Tell him fifteen and you'll give it to him for thirteen.
Made his millions.
Right, but I mean, I think that we should authorize Dave to pursue some more creative ways to sell it.
Okay.
And, you know, and, and you're gonna have to ask us for approval for whatever you're getting for a price.
Swing it in Carrie's. They were the last one to have a, the one to bid on it.
I mean, they could have it for half of what they o-offered to pay for it the first time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, maybe.
And a good place on my firm is on the east, is on Route Seven, cause I have like a space there that you could pull the truck, truck in and put a sign.
Hey, Sharon.
Yeah.
If we still have it come townwide celebration, could we do something?
Why not?
Like stick a sign on this part of.
Park it there with a for sale sign. I don't know. If you, you know, if you're gonna raffle it off, you have to sell a minimum number of tickets and they have to be, cause you wanna.
But if somebody came to that, cause.
Right. If we still have it, put it out there, this truck is for sale, you can own it, and this is the price.
Yeah.
Or best offer.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, we have a plan. Dave's gonna be creative and fall back as Sharon at townwide celebration.
Like I said.
Okay.
But, you know, like I say, you can bring it to the firm.
Okay.
Yep. And I'm right on seven, our entrance on seven and I don't know what Steve was thinking when he did it, but he, there's a great big space there.
For selling town trucks or your vehicles or.
Sell the future.
Can't believe nobody wants that truck.
Somebody does. They just don't know.
We haven't found the right owner, the right person yet.
I mean, especially somebody that, that's just starting out sanding and doing that stuff, you would think, but.
Yeah, nobody's thinking about snow, snow right now.
Nobody wants to think about snow right now.
Yeah.
He came and looked at it and.
He'd offer you like half.
Yes.
Or if that.
If, yeah, if.
I mean, I told him what we had the minimum on it. He goes, you had thirteen thousand on it? Like, nobody bid on it? Nope.
But he didn't end up thirteen, right?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Alright.
I think, I think that's it for Dave.
That's it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Marcia Choffey. Town head lister. Good evening, Marcia.
Good evening, Mary. Um, before I get into my report, um. Listening to Teresa Mealy, um, before your board meeting or as your board meeting. Um. My department has never been contacted by Teresa. We have had no contact whatsoever with her.
And we said. I do remember you had raised it before and we said we were gonna have her talk with you.
Right.
Yeah.
And she has not. And when I talked to her, uh, not too long ago, she said, well, you're not a town employee. So I don't have to talk to you. Um, excuse me. I am a voted. Lister in the town of Frontline. Our department is the one that sets the tax rate. That lodges the grand list. Um. I don't know. I, I just don't know, Mary, what. Thinking is in all of this.
This, the, the handbook, this. We had asked her to be in touch with you, but the handbook we're working on is for. Uh, not. For non-exempt town employees, which means the elected officials aren't covered by this. So that could be, I mean, she could have said something like that, or she might have thought she had said. But, um, still, I think. I'll make a note, I've made a note, um, to have her check in with you on that. Um, because. Um, you're, you're gonna be using the same time sheets as other folks anyway, at the minimum. Um, so you should at least. Give her the benefit of your wisdom on that. Sorry about that, Marcia.
Well, well, what are we covered under? I mean. We're kind of just out there in la-la land, you know, with nobody asking us or. I just don't know, Mary. I just don't know.
Yeah, well, remember there's a budget and, and so to the extent that there is a budget that funds your, your department, that is. You know, part of what governs you. The townspeople set your budget and your rate of pay. By voting on the budget. So you're not totally out there in la-la land, you have a budget. Um, but the, the reverse is the select board doesn't tell you how to run your office. So, you know, it's. We, we can control people who are employees of the town in the sense that we hire and fire them, but elected officials are different. It, it's. I don't know how else to explain it. We're, we're respecting your independence. And giving you the money to run your office, but we're not doing some of the minutia that we can do with. Our employees that we hire.
Well. But what do I tell my employees as to, you know, time off? Vacation time, sick time, whatever, you know?
You don't have employees, you have fellow listers who are also elected officials.
So are you saying, Mary, that she can make her decision? Independently of us?
Keeping in mind that she has the budget. That guides, that guides things. Now, when, when we get around to doing. Adopting the policy for the. Um, non-exempt employees, for the employers that we hire and fire. Then parts of that will be pulled out and will be applied to. The exempt or elected officials. Um, we, we get to do that as a separate thing, but we were trying just to do. The employees that we directly hire and fire and not the people who are elected by the voters.
Okay.
Not a perfect system, but we're trying to piece our way through this thing. Did I answer your question? Did I?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I understand where Marcia's coming.
Yeah.
From because. Compton and all that, they have to deal with too. So I guess what, if I'm hearing her right. She's asking, do we, are, are we gonna have input? And I'm kind of surprised that Teresa would come back that way, that I don't have to talk to you because it's.
Yeah, it doesn't, but.
But, um, and I would be offended if I was her in, in that respect.
So, well, why is it, you know, why is it that my department is the only one that has not been visited? By Teresa Mealy? Why?
Marcia, I, the only. Your department is all elected officials.
Well, there are other elected officials in the town. Kerry's an elected official. Yeah.
None of this applies to us, Marcia.
Right, that's right.
Doesn't apply.
I'm just out there in la-la land and I do what I want to do and I don't have to abide by. Any of the town. Edith, is that right?
Kind of.
Worded is, you are an independent elected official and we are respecting that. So yes, you do have the ability to set your own hours, to decide among the three of you, who's going to work when.
Which we do.
Two, yeah, yeah, okay.
And you work within the confines of the budget that was approved. So there's an hourly rate for the, and there's a set amount of hours, so.
Correct.
And, and all there's difference, and, and at some point. The personnel policy, we will get to the elected officials and how the policy is interpreted for them. Um, it's taken us a year or better just to do this. And so, and we do have that combination of.
Oh, I think we've been working on this thing ever since I got on the board.
Yeah, well, this is a new improver.
Yeah, we're three years into this.
The problem is there were things that were.
We tried to build our.
Yeah.
Go for too many years.
Which was okay, and then we found a lot of holes in it, and then we hired somebody to fill the holes. And they brought more challenges and hole filling materials, so we're, we're getting there, but there is right at the end of the tunnel. We made a big improvement tonight, so.
Alright.
But I don't think anybody being overlooked or.
I will ask Teresa to visit with you, okay?
Alright, well, she has told me that she would be willing to visit with me, but. I haven't had any, you know. Anything, uh, from her, so anyway. That aside, um. We are, um, we're just about done with all of our site visits. We have two more and, um. Hopefully, we will be. Done with those this week. Um, Maria and I have been working tirelessly to, um. Get together and do what needs to be done to, um, lodge grand list. Hopefully, we'll lodge it within the next two weeks. Set a tax rate and. It'll be done.
Okay. Good, thank you very much. Lot of work.
Yeah.
Anything you need from us right now?
Um, no, not from you, but we need from the general public because we still have. People that we have contacted that have not responded to us and. We still need to get out and visit their sites. So we're just gonna pop in on them and say, here we are. You know?
Fair enough.
Yep, fair enough.
Um, Matt's got something.
So I'm not sure if this is necessarily a question from Marcia or for discussion, but the, um. He spoke last time about the fact that Jack has resigned and whether we should appoint somebody. Marcia recommended that we do not. I was just thinking about that, I. You know, I guess what would happen is if we do nothing, then there would be, I don't remember when his term was up. Maybe it's up next year anyway, so there would be an election, somebody hopefully will run for it.
Correct.
I wonder, in the meantime, we'd be sort of squandering a year potentially for somebody who might be interested in a job to use. The allocated budget and time for training that could be done to maybe hit the ground running by the time. Technically, it's supposed to be on the election in August.
I guess that's my question. You know, of all the other things that we talked with Kevin about, we didn't, I didn't ask him that.
Yeah, there's also a cemetery commissioner spot that's lost. That, that was on a few elections.
Maybe we need to just advertise it for that. It just seems to me that if somebody thinks that they're gonna be interested in that job. That, you know, it might be useful for them to start doing some training so that. Next year at this time, some idea of what's going on.
Well, at this time, I mean, we're, we're dealing with. Several different, um. Computer. It just, it's, it's difficult. It's really, really difficult. Uh, we've got V K Pi, we've got Nimrate, we've got the. Grand List, um, and it's, uh, Marie and I have everything under control. We've got two more visits we have to make and we will be done with, um. You know, setting the, um, the values of these, um, um, properties and, um. So, and hopefully we will be, um, able to be done. Um, probably by the mid of June.
Jack had a three-year term which just started.
Oh, did you hear that, Marcia?
What's that? No, Mary, I did not.
Okay, Bill advises that Jack has a three-year term that just started.
Yes, yes, he does, yeah. I do know that, yeah.
We appoint somebody, or if we appoint somebody, they will have to run in February or in August. Because I believe that's what we ran into last year. We had the special election for the town. A public safety building. We appointed somebody in April, March or so, and, and then we.
Select board is a little different from other officers, but I don't know.
I believe that we appointed Marie. And then Marie had to run when we had the special election.
Okay, right.
So if we appoint somebody, so what I think we should do. And maybe we have to, this is another candidate thing, advertise that position. If somebody's interested, they can get a petition and run in August. To fill the vacancy created by Jack's resignation, and they would be filling out. I do believe they would be able to finish his term.
Yeah.
That was my next question, is does that, but does the August selection then fill his term or does that only go through the next regular election or not?
I, I think it's, I think it would be to, to complete his term, so.
Yep.
It would be for two and a half years, but that would be, I think that's a question for Kevin because we need to talk about this. We either need to fill it now or fill it in November, or have it, somebody run that in August or in November for that position. And that way, as they're getting geared up. Getting it, because we're kind of getting in at a little slower time, then, then when things start in the winter and fall for the listers, when you've got property to do and stuff. It would be nice to have somebody on board that was getting familiar rather than dump somebody in their March. To finish out a two-year term, because it's a three-year term, I believe, though.
Yeah.
So.
When, when it came to the board position, the statute said shall for reappointing, so.
Yeah.
Whatever the.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if we have to appoint a listener, but I do believe if we appoint somebody, they have to run that the next election.
Well, it would also give us a chance if we at least advertised it. It would tell us what the interest is within the town.
I think we should.
That may guide us as to whether we stay with listers or whether we go with some other system.
Well, and, and I, I spoke with you, with you, Mary, about the fact that, um. We do away with the Board of Listers. And in one of the elections, and then we go with a. Um, a, uh, appointed assessor and there. You know, there are people that would work with them, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
We talked, we had talked about this.
We did.
For the last eight years about.
Well, yeah, that's true. We have, it has come up and we have talked about it.
We haven't come up with a plan.
No, and. I have, you know, like I said to you, Mary, you know, I've got two more years and I'm out of here. And, uh, you have to think about what you want to do going forward. Whether you want to go, go with an assessor or with another Board of Listers.
And I think if we want to move to the assessor issue, it has to be on the ballot this coming March.
Absolutely, yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
So we got, got some discussion to do, but we got a little time. Okay, I will get information from Kevin.
Okay, other than that. On the Whister, uh, edition, we are, um, pretty close to closing up all of our site visits. We have, um, tomorrow we are going to Starbucks to, um, you know, assess that property. We did Splash Holdings last week, which was, oh, that was a lot of fun. Measuring every single part of the Splash Holdings building, um, here, there, everywhere and, um. Two stories, one story, whatever, but, uh, we, we got it done and, uh. Um, other than that, I think we've got, I think we've only got maybe one more household that we have to visit. And we're done, so.
Good, well, that, a lot of work for you and Marie, and thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, it has been a lot of work, but it's been fun too. It really has been. Um, eye-opening to a lot of different. Lot of different parcels, a lot of different homes, a lot of different, uh, commercial buildings, so.
Okay, any further questions for Marcia? Okay, have a good rest of your evening, Marcia.
Thank you, Mary. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, just a couple of things tonight, um. All eight of our fire trucks have been inspected, uh, one failed. Just for the time being, they're getting parts. Uh, everything else passed with some minor repairs. Uh, let's see. I told you last time, we did participate in those two Memorial Day parades, so we went to those. And. Let's see here, I got one thing to ask tonight, um. And two of our engines, we have thermal imaging cameras. Uh, they're probably. Ten years old or so. Uh, the batteries are no good and obsolete. We cannot get new ones. So we've been kind of shopping around for a couple of new cameras. Um, our preferred vendor is Reynolds. Which they wouldn't even come show us a camera because what they have is discontinued. So we called a couple places. Uh, one camera, and I can't even remember the name of it. The guy. Wouldn't, he couldn't come and give us a. Demonstration, so he mailed it to me. Got here Friday, so I showed everybody last night at our meeting. And we had one other guy come, and he actually came and did a good demonstration. He's actually a. Member of the Poltony Fire Department. And he sells the FLIR, F-L-I-R, camera. Which is the one we are interested in. Um. So. Since the budget is at the end of the year, this is why I'm asking. I, in my total budget. I have about thirty-six thousand dollars left over. And each camera, since we're looking for two. There's three choices here, there's. Um, as a department, we're kind of going with the middle choice, which is. Fifty-four hundred dollars a piece. Plus eight hundred dollars for the truck charger. So it's about sixty-two hundred dollars, so for two of them. You know, it's a little over twelve thousand dollars, so. I'm looking to get approval. If I could for tonight to order two of these so I can buy them with this year's budget.
We'll do approve.
Marcia's been made to approve and it's been seconded, a request, can we, and which vendor is this? Is this FLIR?
Uh, the camera's name is FLIR. The guy's company is. New York Fire Equipment LLC.
Chris, did you get any feedback from him? Um, he's a Poltony firefighter, right? That what you said?
He, yes, I did talk to the fire chief in Poltony. They bought, uh, it's either three or four. Um, but he said, no complaints. They did get a couple of the, uh. The top choice. And he said it's just a pain in the neck to get the battery out. That's why we're thinking to go with, uh, choice number two. He's got. He's got one of those also and they're all identical. They're just, one has a, you know, a little more capability, I guess, but that was his only complaint with the, the top one was you need a special, some kind of Allen wrench or something to get the battery out. That was his only complaint.
Yeah.
Um, suggestion, and that is that we add New York Fire Equipment LLC to our preferred vendor list. Because it sounds like otherwise we'd have to go out to bid because it's over 5,000. Um, Kurt, have you have information about this company or the, the product?
We have two of the FLIR cameras.
Okay.
I think FLIR was actually one of the first in the game back when they first started coming out. They're, they're good cameras.
But we don't know anything about the vendor. They could come from other places, I assume.
Well, yeah, the fact that they're, Polkney has two and, and they're, one of the firefighters sells them, like they have some-
This stuff, this stuff gets tricky, especially in fire service because you have to work with who's got the product and who's local so you can get them serviced.
Yeah.
So it's, it gets tricky with the purchasing policy.
I'm not thrilled about lying from somebody that doesn't come and do a demonstration. And this other guy did and he put some time in and, and we have found, well, I, from my time there, that the people that take the time to come and talk to you are the people you can usually depend on, you know, I-
They'll show up if there's a problem.
My own personal thing, you know, I would like to see us, you know, stay with Reynolds, but Reynolds left out of Rotten, so that we're working out of Berry. But they're honest enough to tell Chris that what they have now is not, um, they're, they're going to be obsolete. So that means MSA is coming out with something new. We did have some MSA cameras. I think we got them or wherever we got them. They were pretty good cameras, but I wouldn't want to wait six months without these in service. So I think that's a pretty good option. So.
Okay, so.
Question.
Yeah.
Uh, Chris, you said there was 36,000 left in your budget. Is that as of now or is that projected that you would have left by the end of the fiscal year?
Uh, after I did the bills on Friday, I took my sheet that Susan and Carrie print out and I just subtracted all the, what I just paid. So, and it's not an exact amount because there's a couple of time cards. So I'm assuming there's social security in there, but should be close. A little over 36,000 left.
Yeah, I guess my question is how much more do you need to get through the end of the year?
The trucks got inspected. Did Chris did-
That's the yearly wild card.
It does. The bill for the inspections, is that, did we sign for that tonight or will that be in two weeks?
No, you should have them there tonight.
Could be there tonight. So that's, so this is-
Except for the tanker because they're waiting for parts. So that'll be there in two weeks.
Yeah, but we're not going to spend 24,000.
Tanker repairs plus one more pay period. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
So do you have any sense of how much that might be? I mean, so the point being here is that this expenditure, we would want to come in under budget, not end up pushing it over budget at the end of the year.
Right. I mean, I have no idea how much the tanker is going to be, but it can't be over a couple thousand dollars and-
I can't imagine it'd be 24,000.
No, and with, I'm assuming right now if with the, uh, like time card thing, there might be two time cards. I, I wouldn't expect a million hours on them. So I think we would have plenty of leftover money for the last couple of weeks of June.
So the, um.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, right? We did.
Yep.
Um, to approve the purchase of two thermal imaging cameras um, at a cost of 5,400 each and $800 times two for, what was it in the?
Truck chargers.
Truck chargers.
Yep.
For a total of 12,000?
1,400, I think is what it was.
12,400.
It would be 12,400 and he did write on his quote right here that shipping is usually between 150 dollars and 200s. So I don't know if I want to add that in there, but.
Six.
Yeah.
Not to exceed 13,000?
Yeah.
Was that? Okay. Did I hear that?
Yep.
Yep.
The 13,000 is the cap. Okay.
Yep.
Thought I did. Any further discussion or questions? It does sound like, well, the department did not go out to bid. They did contact three vendors. Um, Reynolds is, who was our preferred vendor is not, um, selling the product. The other two, um, the department came up with an acceptable product based upon the representation of the person who actually came. Anything further? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Um, opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay, you're all set, chief.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all I had for tonight.
Any questions of the fire chief? All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, Kerry Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, let's see, I don't have a whole lot of my own stuff to share. I just know that there's a few things under action needed that probably have to do with me. Um, I see letter F Vermont Child Care Contribution.
Yeah.
Um, last time we talked about it and we tabled it for this uh, meeting and I said that I was going to give you an estimate. Um, and so I did, I took the, I had to do a report um, for the calendar year of 23 and I had to submit it. So, um, I used the number, which was a little over uh, a million dollars in payroll that we paid out in that calendar year. And I multiplied it by the point 0044 if we were to um, approve doing the, uh, the town paying for the whole contribution. And it was roughly $4,700. So I would like estimate between 4,700 and $5,000 um, for our budget year, going into our budget year, the town paid for the childcare contribution on behalf of all the employees.
Okay. And if we, what was the, the other option that we could pay for two-thirds and have the employees pay for one-third? Is that right?
Yeah, employees would be like 0011 and then the-
It'd be a quarter. It's a quarter.
So a quarter and three quarters?
Yeah, one, one is a quarter.
Okay, that's even. All right. So thank you. Um, appreciate the numbers. That's helpful and we need to decide because we got
one more pay period.
One more pay period before the, the withholding, if that's what we're going to do starts.
We pay for it all. Where? What, what line, where would we take this since we didn't budget it?
Um, just a-
Any ideas, Kerry?
I really don't have an idea. I was hoping that you guys would come up with an answer for that.
It would come, it would be an extra instead of a social security charge or a Veemers charge. It would be like something that doesn't exist in our, our budget line.
But if you- With, through it from one of the existing lines. Run, you know, I'm just trying to think. You really wouldn't, I mean, you could, you shouldn't take it from one of the other existing lines because it, that wouldn't be accurate.
Your payroll just goes over budget.
Right. And it's in each department, it goes over budget because it's, this would be spread over each department.
Every department that has payroll, fire, police, rec-
Yeah.
General is going to have a new item starting on July 1st. You're talking maybe a thou, depending on the hours, if, if you divided it, it would be somewhere between a thousand and thereabouts per department, but it won't be quite because it's for highway and then for police, but we have less, well, about even, actually it might be pretty even. So each budget's going to go over about a thousand bucks.
Or 250 bucks per quarter, right? It's a quarterly payment, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so. I mean, we can.
We can make new line items for each department. It's sort of-
And it'll just be-
Roll.
If we made new line, line items for each department to cover this, the town picks up the cost roughly $5,000, which isn't going to break. And then the only thing we're dealing with is and, and, and you won't have that light, that item is going to be in the red for the entire year because we didn't budget anything, but the overall budget more than likely won't go over. And, and it'll be in there. So, uh, million two we have in the general budget. You know, we're, we're talking a thousand dollars and the general is kind of covered by the 1%. All the other budgets, you know, Chris just said he's got about 3,600 now. They would take it out probably once out of, because their employees, the, the overall department gets the paid once a year. The officers, when they put in the extra work time, that would be deducted each time. You would see that.
Well, we'd be saving our employees a little teeny bit of money.
They get a little, it's a, it's a, another small fringe benefit, Rotten Town is offering its employees.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion that we pay.
Okay. So the motion is made and seconded that we pay the entire amount of the childcare contribution. Estimated to be somewhere around $5,000 for all of, uh, total for the town for our employees. Discussion.
Make my employees contribute.
You're tough.
Now, that way they see it on their paycheck and they know where our money's going.
Mike, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying my, my employees are going to be contributing.
Any discussion?
Get them out to the polls to vote.
My, my only concern is how the state administrates it and we have nothing to-
Right.
But we do need to make sure when we talk to the people that represent Rotten Town, that we make them aware that this better not be
Yeah, don't do this again.
Oh, they're going to blow it just like they always do. Well, I'm just worried that it'll go into a fund and this is going to generate a lot of money statewide. And the people that need the assistance with healthcare or daycare or childcare are not going to get it. And, and there's no way around it.
It'd be. Any other comments? If not, all in favor of the town paying the entire cost of the childcare contribution estimated to be approximately $5,000 for the year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Nope. Motion carries and it's unanimous. Okay.
Um, right. So, um, I don't have anything else. I don't know if you want to go over anything else. Um, we did have the school election last week and it did pass. I'm sure most people have heard by now that it passed. So we should have too many issues with getting the tax rate set and moving forward from there, which is a good thing on our part.
Yes. Relief. Okay. So we have three other things. Um, one is the Town Clerk and Treasurer's Pay Request. So let's take that up now. Um, you'll recall at our last meeting that Kerry had previously met with the Personnel Committee and then asked for one of two things, pointing out that she had extra work resulting, I think primarily from the two special elections. I don't want to paraphrase and she can correct me if I'm misstating that. And was looking for either, um, she informed us that she would either be working just 40 hours coming in at, you know, the, her usual time and leaving at 4:30 or so and doing nothing further outside of regular working hours. Or she requested overtime to be paid for her extra hours. So, um, the board asked, um, well, me and me and Matt, I think, to look into, first of all, can we pay overtime? Um, and then some of the, what is the law on overtime pay? Are we required to work over or pay overtime and so on? So um, we're going to try and between Matt and I, we did speak to Town Council Kevin Brown, as you requested. Um, we're subject to a couple of laws. One is the state um, laws on overtime and wages, but the one that trumps both is the Federal Wages and Hours Act. So that's pretty much what Kevin was referencing. Um, there is no requirement because Marcia is an elected official. There is no-
Kerry.
Sorry. Sorry, Marcia is trying to, no. That Kerry is an elected official. There's no requirement that we pay her overtime. Um, the question is, can we pay her overtime? And the, the summary that Kevin gave us was the town can pay an exempt employee overtime or remuner, no, sorry, can pay an exempt employee remuneration on an hourly basis as long as the task is something extra or in addition to their regular or daily duties. And his comment, after-hours work to staff elections is probably okay. So extra pay for extra things not anticipated, not part of the general um, charges of the Town Clerk or Town Treasurer. Am I paraphrasing so far?
Um, I think I'm with you so far.
Okay, all right.
If I'm tracking him correctly.
Okay, um, so the question is that, that's part one. Part two is, is there any threshold at which, and this has been raised, um, in the past, at which we have to pay um, overtime if somebody is below a certain salary level. And there, there is a law that says a minimum salary to be eligible for this exemption is $35,000 a year. Kerry's well above that. So that, you know, the exemption that would require her, that us to pay her overtime, we're, we're way over that. So we are not required to pay overtime. Okay.
So does that explanation like an end? So the, the, for me, the most close, um, comparison would be highway. Our road commissioner is, uh, commission, he's a salaried employee. He doesn't work hourly. So would we be, um, denying him if we didn't pay him? And, and I bring this up is because the, I'm thinking of the March storm. And so the, the two-week period ended on Friday. Saturday they come in and they plow 20 hours. Now he's salaried. But that description says if it's something that's not considered in their normal activity, then we could pay extra. So would he be not allowed to, for us to compensate him for those extra hours because it is part of his normal job? I mean, this is where I'm, I'm having a hard time with this. I, I, I don't want to not try to compensate Kerry for the extra work. They're shorthanded in there. So there's extra work. And I think she understood when she took the job that it is a salary job. And the 40-hour work week is kind of just a measuring stick, but it's not probably always going to work. There are going to be weeks where you're going to work more and there might be weeks you work less. Right now, the less is probably not happening because there's a lot going on and there's, you know, there's, they do need a third person. So how do we, I just trying to, I, I've been agonizing over this for two weeks as to how to be fair to our salaried employees and, and not make one treat any of them any differently or, or whatever. And I, and I haven't come up with an answer.
You also just touched on the second part of this, which is again, this employee versus elected official thing. And Kevin sent a second email about Town Clerk's position specifically that I found very confusing.
Right.
Uh, raised more questions for me than I've answered. So.
Because, because we are comparing, we're not comparing apples to apples. Dave's hired.
Right.
Kerry's elected.
Right.
So so would we be out of line to just do like? so would we be out of line to just do like a one-time.
A bonus.
Bonus.
That's what I was wondering.
A bonus for the this fiscal year and and just because we did that another year. We 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 gave bonuses when Don was chair in
Yeah.
to several different employees.
There is another that there's another possibility that Matt came up with.
Well, I mean, the other thing we could and I feel probably should do, which I don't think it completely responds to Carrie's concern perhaps, but seems to me that if we're gonna pay BCA members or ballot clerks or what have you to man to work at elections and come out, come here after hours and vote and I mean, to count the votes. But I I don't think Carrie should have to work that time for free. I mean, it seems to me we should pay her the same rate for that. Those after-hours, that after-hours work unless unless Carrie is, you know, adjusting her hours because she has the authority to do that or to make up for that time, which she could do, but I mean, I think what she has said is, yeah, she's doesn't want to do that because people expect the office to be open. So she's gonna work regular time to keep the office open and work overtime to oversee the management of the election, arguably that you know, could be covered with an hourly rate. Now, the flip side of that argument is, well, it's part of the town clerk's job and that's just what it is, but.
Normal year, when you have a couple of elections, it's
Right.
easily absorbed when you have this year, when you got like six elections.
No, well, that's calendar year.
Calendar, yeah.
So if
Yeah.
it's three in the fiscal year and three the coming fiscal year, if you count it that way.
Yeah.
And we don't differentiate when we set salaries for the town clerk. We don't say, oh, this year you've only got one election. So I I mean, I I think we could and there's, there is money and it does recognize, the question is, do we do it? Problem is, retroactively, this fiscal year, do we say we're gonna pay you in the coming fiscal year for the August election, the extra time you put in, and the November election and the extra time you put in, and in the March election, and we'll use the ballot clerk line because we have not budgeted. And remember, we have already budgeted and the townspeople have approved our budgets for Carrie's salary and all of, you know, all of the benefits. And that's, you know, her.
Two years. This finished this year and all of next year.
Right, so there is money and it does recognize if we pay her out of the ballot clerk line that you know, there is extra work associated with elections. So.
Is there money on that line specifically? So.
It'll probably end up being short.
It probably will.
But if you keep it consistent and it's in that line, then are there?
There's two lines. So for ballot clerks for the coming fiscal year, three elections. We've budgeted forty five hundred dollars. And for Board of Civil Authority, generally, we've budgeted sixty five hundred dollars. Now, some of the BCA work would be
Taxes.
reappraisals, but we haven't had any. So between the two lines, we've got eleven thousand dollars.
We've been spending anywhere close to that.
BCA, Board of Civil Authority. Well, we went over that. Oh, you know what? We went over it in twenty-two, twenty-three. No, we didn't go over it. We came sixty-two hundred dollars out of the sixty-five. And I think that's because of the special election on the fire police facility. I'm guessing that.
So it Carrie, is all the extra work because of the elections or is there also extra work because Susan's not there as often? You don't have an extra helper and we've also thrust it a bunch of wildfires onto you, like tracking down this capital improvement mess and other stuff.
Kurt, thank you very.
We lost you.
Oh, you cut out.
You cut out, Carrie. We didn't get that.
Yeah, and your your box isn't lit up, so you're.
Where'd you go?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Hey. We we missed your response to Kurt's question.
Oh, sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So what I said was to Kurt, thank you very much for bringing that fact up. It's not just election stuff. It is exactly what you said. It's the limited amount of help this year and the extra stuff. I want to say worldwide, it's not townwide, that's coming down on my shoulders. So it's everything.
But let me, let me do the other little thing here that what I said to Marcia was we respect the independence of Carrie's office as we respect the independence of the Lister's office. And Carrie manages her office as she sees fit with the budget that she came to us and, you know, we worked on with her. She she did cut back on Susan's hours or Susan wanted to cut back and she agreed. And I know Carrie has been trying to hire for that other position, which we authorized and the voters authorized her to have. And I think it's critical that she gets somebody in there, even if it may not be a perfect person, but get somebody in there to help with some of this stuff that she and Susan could hand off while they work on, you know, some of the other things. So I do want to reflect the fact that the select board has given Carrie the tools and and including funding the COT system, which should have cut down on the time the land records were in there. With that said, I mean, Matt's proposal, the bonus proposal, I could live with either of those. So overtime, I have a really, really hard time with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I think that we want to stay away from that term. I think that some compensation based on either either of those two scenarios, the one-time bonus thing and that allows us, if we're so moved to do that for somebody else or other employees that have put in extra time during the course of the year for unusual events or whatever that they're selling. I I don't know how we want to deal with that, but I'm I've tried to look at us being fair to all our employees and treat them all the same. And I think we'd make a very big effort, whether they're in hired or elected, to treat these, to pay them a proper wage and a proper compensation for their times. And, you know, we went through all that.
If I can, on your.
Well, I just think. Why can't we just give her a bonus? She has been overworked. Take a look at it. She looks like she's been through the mill. I mean, if you guys don't want to do it, that's fine.
Nobody has said that we don't want to. It's how to do it in a fair manner, so you don't tick off anybody else that's employed by this town. We don't step on any other toes and we don't violate any particular laws or rules or whatever. So we have a couple of tools. I think realistically, I think the bonus way to go in is just to figure out an amount. That that way, it's it's at our discretion. And if we choose to do this, we can, you know, we we did it, I think it was either last year or the year before, just time of the clear boys, clear blue sky.
Yeah.
We we just did it and 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 we did it for doing it. So.
And I think Carrie was one of the ones who benefited from that as well.
I think I think maybe Bill did. And I think that I don't remember who else and and so you know, I think it was during this COVID year when we were going through a lot of stuff and it was a lot of extra work that was being done so that we could all be in touch and get things done. So.
What, one other thing I put on your your desk, there's a three-pager.
Yeah.
Municipal Compensation Benefits Report. There it's actually a very, very thick binder, but I pulled out other towns and including Rutland Town and clerk treasurer positions and how much they're paid. And at the bottom of the last page, it shows the average pay and the median pay and Carrie's above both.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not being unfair to her generally. We're 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 working at that fair payment for all of our employees.
And I think we go out of our way to try to do that before we set it out.
Yeah.
You run into a unique year. So did you have a number in your little mind?
I think it's gonna require an executive session to figure all that out. I think we're gonna have to look at a budget sheet so we know where we're at with the budget.
That's usually fair.
All right, is that a motion? To go into executive session? Motion's made. Is there a second?
We're gonna do it now or at the end?
I mean, we can do it at the end.
Uh, okay.
Move for at the end.
Okay, that's what we'll, and that's suspended. We're all in favor of the executive session at the end of the meeting, please say aye. Okay, motion carries and that's what we'll do. All right, um, also the Cortina in settlement fund balance. Oh, yeah, Carrie, do you have?
Um, that's what I was questioning. I thought we went over this last time. Didn't we, didn't I give you a number of everything?
We did. There was nothing in writing. It was all pretty much verbal. Bill, the minutes don't reflect it. And I scribbled notes, but.
So and then I had raised a que- I was asking about basically how do we report it and what impact, if any, does it have on carryover funds? And so I sent an inquiry to Andrew about this and he responded this afternoon. And so Mary and Carrie are copied on this. I don't know if you've seen it, but it's a somewhat lengthy response. And I'm not sure if it completely answered my question, but I think the gist of it is it's up to us to decide how much we apply and the way it was done last year is it, I think it was mentioned in the audit report, but it didn't. It wasn't. He said it does not represented is not represented separately in the audit report or general ledger other than the ending assigned balance once it is calculated. So what I think that means is that what you would you would see, uh, the police department just would have a deficit unexplained. And the funds with whatever amount we decided we were we were applying, we apply and then there's a balance and then the other thing I asked about that he confirmed is that we need to vote before the end of the fiscal year
Right.
to carry over with whatever the balance is as that, you know, dedicated fund or whatever we call it.
Did that last year.
Right, because otherwise that gets lost, right?
Right. Uh, Bill, would you please put on next meeting's agenda vote to segregate Cortina Fund? That's the, I don't know. To not, to not carry to.
We want to carry it over into the next year and not.
Cortina Fund is a separate fund and not in the and not sweep into the capital improvement.
The issue that I think we started to deal with then is how much do we apply in that? We know there are certain things that we specifically authorize, so purchases of cruiser and equipment to go with it. We intended to use it specifically for the directed patrols. Uh, and then in Carrie's calculation, she had basically made an allocation of the of the rest of the budget based upon the amount of time that officers are spending on the southern end of town versus everything else.
Twelve percent, seventeen percent and something in the middle.
It's kind of the administrative costs and the benefits portion.
I think the easiest way to do this is to apply the deficit. So so the budget's level funded.
That's kind of where my mind is going because if you do more than that, I'm not sure. And I'm not sure it's necessary and the consequences aren't clear, whereas if we have yeah, whatever balance we retain, we continue to use to pay for overtime or hire an officer.
Involve the Cortina money to cover the deficit in the police budget and cover it with one percent money, which we're also authorized to do. Any excess one percent money
True.
has been used in the past to cover any overages in Ed's budget. And that way it preserves your Cortina money for that directed patrols and it allows.
I mean, the directed patrol and the hiring of an officer would be my priorities.
Right, and we have allocated funds for both of those.
But but it's essentially, it's the Cortina that's causing the deficit.
Right.
And we said, I think what we said for the twenty, for the next for the next fiscal year, we anticipated using a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that fund. And I think the way that Carrie Carrie, remind me if if I'm wrong, what, and I think I wrote this down, I could look it up, but I think the balance was gonna be something like sixty-five thousand.
That's what sticks in my mind.
And you know, of course, they're continuing to pay us monthly and it sounds like they'll be probably paying us, I'll see you next fiscal year. So we may very well have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus, but to me, of my mind, if we're looking to hire somebody, you know, as soon as possible in the new fiscal year, the higher that balance is to cover, the better.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's the easiest way because the way that that's set up in the budget line is the directed patrols are coming out. They're coming out of the overall budget anyway, and that's what's showing the deficit at the bottom. So if we pay the deficit out of the fund, then.
We're paying the directed patrols and we're paying the overhead associated with.
Yeah, yeah, because if 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 we overpay into it, any excess from that budget is gonna go to capital improvement. So there's no point.
Yeah.
No point in doing that.
To Joe's point, the same is true, one percent money if the excess isn't used.
We won't lose either way. We can either.
There's a difference.
There there is a difference because the Cortina money is allocated for a specific.
Right. And if we have one percent money, we might, we can use it for the public safety building or anything else.
So it we, as long as the Cortina money goes to benefit the PD, that's what it's intended for and and that's probably its best use. Given that the amount we're getting per month should offset the amount that Ed's people can work, we should never really be at a lot. We we should be able to always come out ahead or even.
When we say level fund again, I guess we have to talk about what that actually means. I think what we're saying is it was a budgeted expense amount. We exceeded that amount. It's the excess amount that.
Is what comes out of the Cortina.
We're gonna take up the difference.
I think it's better to do it.
The revenue, on the revenue side of things, that some of that may still be funded by one percent money because it will be a carryover from the general fund. But.
That's true.
We would be better, anything to do with the police department to use that Cortina.
They'll save, and that saves all the calculating and the
Right.
weird accounting and.
Work for you. That that sound like a.
So do you want to make that motion now or do numbers for the next meeting or we, I mean, we don't, we don't know the numbers, but we don't really need to with your.
Yeah, and it won't be until the end of the, all the bills come in, whether, how much, if Ed's budget's over, then we'll just offset the difference with Cortina money. So.
It's our, we know it's over. It was over a lot, you know, two weeks ago is over significantly and it's because of those specific items.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we cover any. Cover the deficit of the police budget with Cortina funds.
Question's been made and seconded to cover any deficit of the police budget with Cortina funds.
I think that's the easiest way to do that, even from year to year.
Discussion.
I think we've discussed it pretty much. I think so.
We have.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of them, unless you had.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Good, good, good.
So then, I think, although we don't know what the final balance will be, it seems to me I can make a motion now that whatever the balance of the Cortina fund is, that we carry it over as dedicated funds for this purpose
Right.
of supporting the overages in the police department.
And it's because that's a, that's a revolving amount. You have money coming in every month, you have money going out, some months.
Well, there's a motion, but it hasn't been.
Second.
I thought we were gonna do that next week.
Well, doesn't matter.
We're here in the business.
Okay.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. You roll over the Cortina money separately into its own fund.
After paying the deficit.
After the deficit, that was our first motion. Okay, discussion. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say I. I. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Good. So I guess we don't need to do the Cortina. We just need to make sure it's very clear in the minutes what we just did, both of them.
The hard thing with that Cortina money is because it's a revolving amount. You've got money coming in, money going out. It's hard at anyone given, say. Tomorrow for Carrie to go in and say, okay, this is what the balance is, because there's stuff outstanding, there's something coming and it.
Well, this discussion leads us perfectly to action item G. Board to discuss how to flag capital improvements expenditures.
Sticky no on the door. I like that. We just spent this amount of money. Like I remember making motions and I know we, we voted on the monies we put into the public safety building. Whether Bill will ever find it.
So.
I know he's been working.
What you have on your desk is every single thing that is in the minutes. Since you started the capital improvement fund.
Okay.
I could not find a vote in any meeting where you actually dedicated money to the public safety building. I went through, I searched terms and numbers and things and then finally I went through every single set of minutes. So every board meeting and it was not there.
Why is there a number on here?
Plenty of discussion.
Yes.
Post, so I, these are all in descending date order. There is discussion at meetings past that, that that money was voted on. But it never actually, I, I could not find a meeting.
Town meeting minutes.
It was voted on by the people.
It was voted on by the people.
I'm wondering, is it a ballot item?
The ballot did not, the ballot item did not specify an amount. It just said capital improvement funds. It did not specify an amount. I looked at that too.
I thought we did.
I.
I thought it was.
I thought we did too, so I eventually said, okay, so I went through every meeting and there was. Past, past that. Where, where, that, that range, it was talked about that the money was set aside, but I, I could not find a meeting where there was actual vote.
So do we know? What the balance would be without that?
Well, okay, there's one other thing we can.
This is a lot of work, Bill. Pretty good job.
Yeah, it is. It is.
This spreadsheet. When you look at it in, on, on a computer, the minutes to the right are linked, so you can click on it and it brings up meeting minutes that correspond to that vote. And up at the top, I have where the very first discussion was on the capital improvement funds. So. There are a couple of things here that weren't specified, so there's some, there's holes that need to be filled in, but that is everything that I could. I could find that related to actual votes on capital improvement or the Cortina settlement.
You know what I find interesting, Mary?
What do you find interesting?
On E seventeen twenty-two, it looks like we authorized four thousand dollars for a portable restroom for the, uh. Transfer station. And we haven't, never spent it.
Yeah, okay.
You authorized the money for the concrete work here and we never did it.
Yeah.
Does that live perpetuity or does that eventually?
Actually, once we vote, it's spent.
So, wait a minute, there's on. So you're saying there's no minutes to correspond to the thirty-five, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
There's no minutes to correspond to a vote.
To a vote, but there was.
There were discussions at meetings that you've out, that you've set aside the money. I cannot find a meeting where there was an actual vote on that amount.
But that number was discussed or where did it come from?
Wait a minute, we're still in the fiscal year. Right? We are.
So the, um.
So we can vote it.
Vote at any time, but we just need to know what the balance is so we can make a decision.
So, so one of the things, so are all of these bills supposed to be from the, um, capital improvement?
There's two columns there to the right. One's capital improvement, one's Cortina, so wherever the X lies is whatever fund it came from.
Okay, alright. Alright, alright, that was, I wasn't reading the top. I was just reading up and down.
So are these? Okay, these are all things that were approved, but we've identified a couple that have not been.
The one, the, the very last one, the very first one at the top is, is not approved, but.
Oh, wow, okay. And we've, but Joe's mentioned one or two that we've not spent, actually spent the money, but have we actually spent the money for all the other ones or not?
The trucks we did, I know the, I know the highway trucks we did because there's a couple of them up there.
And so the other, the other part is now we gotta figure out how much we actually spent on all this stuff.
Well, and how much we still have.
Well, if you, if you, you know, you look at, we've authorized eleven thousand six hundred dollars for two projects that were never done, so that means the money. Is authorized to be spent, but it still should be in the account because we didn't spend it, because nobody did the work.
Yeah, and like the highway, the highway trucks weren't, you know, they might have a hundred and fifteen thousand.
I don't remember exactly what Dave paid for those too, so that's.
That needs to be another line in this is.
What, what the actual amount, right.
So Carrie has access to the spreadsheet to update and, and.
Yeah.
Did you give it to her? Did you show it to her? Good, great, okay.
It's shared, so she, that way she can click on the minutes and gets, gets the copy of it, so.
Okay.
That, I gave that to her, um, last week.
Okay.
So yeah, that's, that's the next part is to figure out the actual.
The actual, and when it was, and if it was expended, because it looks like there are at least a couple.
And the thing after that is to come up with a plan so that we can track it better.
Well, yeah, but then we also need to probably do a vote to authorize what we had assumed all along. Which is three hundred and fifty thousand and then we might need. Well, yes. Okay, all of the above.
Yeah. Do we remember what the actual wording of the ballot was last year?
I don't.
For the special election.
I don't have it in my brain. I have a whole folder at home with all of that information.
We need to look at that.
Okay.
Because I almost think there's something in there regarding the. Capital Improvement Fund.
I think there was, there was also the.
There was a number. I think we just said, we were trying to say how much we authorized to borrow. In order to come up with that number, we took these other things into consideration and we said.
Right. Two point nine or three million and we were gonna bor- borrow about two point.
And we said, well, the rest will be paid for out of our capital improvement, but we didn't say specifically.
I, I know we talked.
We have a way to calculate it because we, there was a max, max number to be spent and then we had the ARPA funds.
I've got the spreadsheet. Joey and I worked on the actual, here's the breakdown of where the money is coming from and we did two columns. One is the old number at the, the lower bin, the other was the higher number.
Question.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, shall the town of Rowlands replace the McKinley Avenue Fire Station with a public safety building to house the. Fire and police departments at a cost not to exceed five million, five hundred, two thousand dollars and no cents. And to be paid for by federal America Rescue Plan Act grant funds and interest thereon. The town's capital project reserve account and by any additional grants obtained with a balance of. Up to two million, five hundred, seventeen thousand, eight hundred, fifty dollars and no cents to be funded by the issuance of bonds.
That was the special one, right?
That was the special.
Yeah, okay, that sounds right.
So, do you know where the original valid item is, would have been the year before, right?
Well, that kind of opened under, I guess.
Because it was four point. Report, you guys. It's warned in the town report if you have a town report in front of you and I believe it's seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars and some. Some change. But it was.
So it would have been in, we would have voted on that in twenty-three?
Twenty-two or twenty-three.
Twenty-three, so that would be in the twenty-two one? I think. That would be year ending June thirtieth, twenty-three. That's last year. This is twenty-three.
So, yeah, it's gotta go the previous one, which I've got.
Twenty-two.
Thank you.
Uh, so mark it twenty-two, seven seventy-one, two thirty-one from capital improvements.
Yes, so there's an amount.
Seven seventy-one.
Yep.
Okay.
That is not three hundred and fifty thousand.
No, that's right, because we added two years. We dipped into it twice. We took it at the end of. One year because we knew what it was and then the next year, another year had gone by because we were voting a year later, so we took that as well. Okay, so the voters authorized it.
The voters authorized a seven hundred and seventy-one thousand twenty-two.
Well, they didn't, because I got voted down.
There was a separate item.
Is that, that's the one that passed? This was for what now, Bill?
Back for more money.
That's what it was.
The, we had, we had, but we had to reword it, but the rewording didn't specify the seven seventy-one, it said to use that money. But it was already approved in this one, so.
Yeah, so I guess.
Okay, could you redo this with maybe that number?
See, I thought we were talking.
And then the other part of this is we gotta get all the incomes, you know, we gotta get all the deposits into this account, so we know.
And, and the problem with that is, well, that's the surplus from every budget starting in twenty sixteen. Because I think this was voted on in twenty-fifteen.
So, yeah, but.
Because you were.
First one, yes.
No, because I knew how I followed this. You were elected to the board in twenty-fourteen. During that year, you found the stuff in the mattress and so this. Plan was put in place, how to put that out there, make sure we didn't lose any and we voted on it in twenty-fifteen. And it took effect at the end of that, I believe, that fiscal year.
Set up the capital improvement.
So it would have started on July first, twenty fifteen. When the funds.
So did it take the surpluses from the fourteen, fifteen year?
Yeah, yes. That's where, I think that's where you would.
You'd have to look at where you set the tax rate.
Because I remember, because I remember the first couple of tax rates I helped with in twenty sixteen. Where we were talking about offsetting the police budget with one percent money.
Yep.
And, and we were trying to figure out and we were figuring nine hundred thousand or a million and then how to, how to do that. We discussed that. And then lately, because at that time, the police budget was part of the general. They were all, they were together and then we separated them. Police budget was never a standalone budget because it was in its infancy stage when we started.
Yes, you're right.
And so it was after that, that it, as the budget grew and the department grew. It became worthwhile to separate that and have a standalone budget and let, let the voters vote on it and then I don't ever.
What do we need to do for the purpose of knowing what's in the capital improvements budget? We've identified now the voters, the voters charged that we put some money aside. Bill needs to go back and find the original. The first, the close of the fiscal year, you said what, twenty fifteen?
I'm, I'm pretty sure the vote was in March of twenty fifteen and it would be my guess, they, we started. That fiscal year's budget when it ended in June, anything that was left would have been swept in.
Would be the first installment in that.
Would be somewhere, somewhere in.
You would, you would know when we sat, if, when the, when the tax rate was set for sixteen, because before that. Any surpluses should have went to offset taxes the next year.
Yes.
No, they didn't.
Minutes.
They just went to funding.
It may not be, it doesn't have to be minutes. It's a, it's a, a financial number at the end of the.
Should be in audit reports.
It should be in the audit reports.
The audit report, so whatever, because prior, prior to. The capital improvement fund being established, all department fund balances reduce taxes for the next year. That's the way it was done, except for highway. Highway has always been allowed to, so with this change. Every year, the budgets are funded new by taxes and the excess goes into the capital improvement fund, which allows us to. Do jobs without borrowing money, which in the long run actually saves the town money. So, so in, in, prior to twenty fifteen's vote. There was no mechanism to deal with any excess one percent money in.
Which is why the damn thing kept.
Kept growing, so they, if you look at some of those older budgets, it would say the general and they're gonna put two hundred or three hundred thousand from one percent. And then it would have generated two or three times that, so it went into this limbo account and nobody knew what to do with it. Until along came.
Donna Zeller.
Yes, and she saw this and then the board during that fifteen, fourteen, fifteen year came up with a very good plan. And they allocated these funds, cash to open, we built the highway garage, we paid off. Trying to know twelve years of the bond.
It was JP's motion and I can see him sitting there making the motion.
Yep, and we paid off, you know, all these years of the bond and then we established that capital improvement fund to not get us into this situation.
And that's where things went squarely is because that, the excess one percent monies from the end of one fiscal year should have offset taxes for the next fiscal year. And they didn't.
Mostly did, but not entirely.
It, it, that's why there was excess monies, because those monies should have went to offsetting the tax rate.
Prior to the capital improvement.
Prior.
And, and it wasn't, nobody knew what to do with it.
And technically, I, my personal opinion is it still should and we should hold that at the end of the year and offset taxes the next year with it.
Well, we have the voters' permission to do capital improvements thing.
It's six to one because we're, if we don't do that and then we want to do a project, we gotta go borrow, so.
We still have the capital improvement for your excesses from budget lines.
Yeah, you could do that.
And then you're.
Yeah, I see.
We'll see where our tax rate goes. That's still something we can, when tax rates go through the roof.
So, we'll take another whack at this of knowing where we are and, and ask Bill if he would.
Well, we got him a big chunk there that we just had.
Big chunk, phew.
But I still think last year, there was mention of more money beyond the seven seventy-one.
Might.
But I don't know. I, I think we'd have.
Find out what there is and then we can decide.
So, we're down two. We got a few more things to go through.
Yeah. We're through all of it.
So we're through all of the things that Carrie was on for, other than the executive session at the end. Okay. Um, next up, Mike Delahanty, First Constable. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. A couple of. Couple of things, um, been kind of a busy week, uh, had a pretty good felony level retail staff at Home Depot that I'm working. Um, actually a fraud that had come in tonight, uh, Chief Doom was all take that, I already assigned myself if he's there. Um, uh, but the big. Okay, Tom, I've got it under control. Um. So the big one is the, um, property at one eighteen Route seven, uh, Mr. Rogirio's property. Uh, I'm, I'm sure you'll remember that we did a very temporary fix until the weather was. Good enough to pour a new wall or a new cinder block wall. I did talk to him earlier today because I'm trying to set up a site visit with him so that we're all on the same page about what that needs to look like to be satisfactory. He actually tried calling me a little while ago, um, but I texted him and said, I'll have to call you back because I didn't want to lose this call. So I will, I will call him once I'm done here and then I will report right back to you guys on what the outcome of this is. Uh, to make sure that we have a timeline that's appropriate and a fix that's appropriate. They, um. Be honest, the temporary fix was, was not really to the standard it needed to be, but we'll make sure that the permanent fix definitely is.
Okay, so you're gonna drop off this call, call or text John and then come back on?
No, no, I'm gonna, I, once, once, um, once I'm done here with you guys, um, I will reach out to him. And then I can either follow up to you with everybody on the board with an email or you, or we can wait till obviously two weeks. I want to make sure that we get a real adequate, appropriate timeline on this permanent fix because it's gone on too long. Uh, but I want to do a site visit with him to make sure that we're all on the same page on what needs to happen to make sure this permanent fix is the right fix.
Okay.
So Mike, the panel or panels missing in the overhead door facing Route four?
Okay. Okay, yeah, um, I've, I've got a list, um, I will, I'll make sure that it's on it. I've got a laundry list of things about that property that I'd like to see. Uh, addressed and, uh, that's why it's a lot easier if I meet with him onsite so we can point it all out so that we don't miss anything.
Okay.
Okay, um, Mike, it occurs to me that we did something similar on Perkins Road. JP did it, did the site visit. And I think we then had a hearing with the property owner. And we came up with findings and conclusions and an order from that. So you might check with JP and see if at some point we have to set a hearing and go through all of the information you're bringing in.
Okay, that's, I'll, I'll talk to John Paul about that.
Good, thank you.
Okay, and besides that, that's all I got.
That's quite a bit, so thank you very much.
You got it, you got it. We'll talk soon.
Any questions of our First Constable?
All good.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
All right, have a good night.
You too. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yep. So for the last month calls for service, we had one hundred and forty-eight, excuse me, and sixty-five traffic stops.
Is it a hundred and forty-eight plus sixty-five?
Correct.
Okay.
That's why the packet's so thick.
That's why. Very, very busy on Post Road and Grove Street.
Good. Did the paving of Post Road create?
Public speaking?
Uh, it was mentioning today somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, it mentioned me that it made, because it's new and black and smoother.
Yeah, shiny. The word I have is like seven in the morning and or four thirty at night.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we'll get some input from the Second Constable when it's his turn.
Okay.
Might have some interesting statistics for you.
Okay.
My curiosity has peaked on the first page about the call type, public speaking.
Speaking.
Or did you go to the school or something?
It probably wasn't me, it was.
It's Post Road.
It's probably the school. It wasn't.
Were entered in the office or?
No, a lot of times if, uh, I know they've asked Ted to go to talk to the eighth grade class about.
Oh. Citizen complaint? Guy over here is talking in public.
If we, yeah.
Yeah, gotta go squash that real quick.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
Well, that's a lot less interesting than I hoped.
We could have, uh, an incident that, a couple of incidents with the fire department. We had, uh, a truck blow a hose on, uh, West Parker Road and go down Route Four towards West Rottlin, or Business Route Four. And of course, the fire department was there to help out, and Dave Sears and the town truck were spreading sand like crazy, and they, they got the state involved, and we weren't able to figure out whose truck it was. And I still have to email somebody from the, uh, Environmental Department of the state who probably wants information.
Oh, yeah.
But yeah, thank the fire department for that one. Also, we did get a request, I remember last week, I might have, last time we met, uh, to drop our, uh, speed card off at the, uh, racks around here in Christian School. Apparently, it's quite a, they sent me an email with a link to watch some kid who can run nineteen miles an hour. Make a good cop. They're looking to see who could, if anybody could beat his record before he graduates.
Our speed car challenge pays off.
We got a nineteen, okay, nineteen mile an hour runner right now.
Maybe we can make this, uh, an inter-school contest.
Are you gonna do?
That'll be a new thing at the townwide celebration.
We usually do set it up. Yeah, they've been doing that a little bit.
Yeah.
Great.
What else? Yeah, that's good. Uh, probably, um, police committee discussion about, there's a couple of things. One is, uh, I know we authorized to spend money out of our depreciation fund for the new watch guard cameras we got, but we got another bill, which is significantly more than last year. I think it has to do with storage, but we have to look at our lease to see. We gotta do some research on that to make sure that they're not overcharging us on this lease we had, but it may, the language may say, the more we store, the more it's going to cost us.
Oh.
Uh, so well, there's some things that we can do as the department to get rid of, something like any tests. Citizens Assist, they can go away after a month or so, as long as it's not criminal related. Well, looking at it, I'll talk to the, as far as it did, it did come out of the, out of our appreciation fund, but I, I guess going forward, I've been told that that's probably not possible. Each month, each lease, but I think we've done it with our tasers. We, each year where we've taken out of the appreciation fund.
That, well, okay. Let's take a look at it. We'll do a police committee meeting.
Do we know what the fund balance is?
We can find out. I don't know.
Those are easier to manage, the depreciation funds, less.
Oh, pretty guaranteed, yeah. It's that, uh, let me just continue on with this. Any questions on the, uh, calls for service? Oh, yeah, we did have a, uh, fire department issue, uh, involved in a, uh, possible, uh, meth lab at the Cortina. At the, uh, it turned out to be nothing, thank goodness, but we had, uh, the state, we had a meth lab with state police, we had hazardous waste. It was quite a show, with big green trucks and several big red trucks and green cars and blue and black and white cars, so. But it turned out to be, uh, uh, it wasn't a meth lab, let's put it that way. It's always drug related, but not.
Something else. Chart here with dollar signs on it, these calls to these locations, is that what that is?
This is the businesses in the, in the south end and all the calls we get.
Okay.
Okay.
Just regarding the dollars.
So the last thing is, any, any other questions on the one hundred and forty-eight calls for service? I touched on a couple of highlights of.
It's a lot. So there's one, one, uh, Diamond Run Mall. Call. Only.
Is there any?
Do you have an incident number, Mary, on that one?
Oh, right, on the, yeah. Um, it is first page.
Okay.
Uh, twenty-four RT zero 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 nine oh four. Yeah, Matt raises a good point. No, I don't see any calls to the Spartan Arena on.
Uh, no, there's no.
Thirty-first.
Thank goodness.
Early.
I didn't mind wanting some money though, that night.
Really? Good. Excellent. Um, the, that, I, I mean, I hadn't driven up around the Diamond Run Mall in a while, and I mean, the graffiti, the pot, the horrible condition of the pavement, the trees are mostly dead. I mean, the place is a mess.
A dump.
Yes.
That's what happens to vacant buildings.
Right.
No maintenance and no upkeep. And longer it goes, the worse it's going to get, and the harder it's going to be to recover. And they've cost us, how many businesses, or at least one business that we know of, that wanted to be in rural town, and it's not here because they went to active businesses. It's going to hurt our business.
Oh, I remember that. Yeah, I remember that.
That was Costco, wasn't it?
BJ's.
BJ's.
Hundred cars an hour supposed to come into that place. We lost ninety jobs, I think it was.
Yeah, it was gonna be like one of the Northeast distribution hopes for him. It was gonna be quite a palace.
Yep. Yep. Maybe that will be included in our new Diamond Run Mall infrastructure. And we should know something by August, right?
Right, August.
Which August?
Back in on August.
I've heard August for five years.
I mean, we give, uh, we give some of the local people a hard time about how their buildings look. I know they're off the beaten path, but you just gotta go past that dump to go to the Spartan Arena.
Yeah, you do. Yeah. Well, we had them in here, we'll get them in here again.
I still think we need to, it's time, you know, let JP, just like we did.
Go after them.
Just, just like we did with the guy on Perkins Road, and we are after, you know, size doesn't matter, and who you are doesn't matter. And I think if you start doing something, put a little pressure on them, maybe they'll wind up and do something, or not, or level the place.
One of these August days.
Well, yeah, well.
Whatever year that.
You know, we can't um, pick and choose who we go after for the condition of their buildings, or the, what they look like in the town.
So is that a motion?
Well, we'll see. When we talk to him, I want to get his input before I give him a job.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the last one is our monthly report from, uh, South End. We had a total of, uh, one hundred and forty-eight cases, uh, sixty-five were car stops. We took that into consideration, so one hundred and seventeen calls from the South End, which is seventy-nine percent of our time. It's probably, uh, the second highest month we've had since, uh, we started keeping track in two thousand and nineteen, back when we had nine calls. Now we're up to one hundred and seventeen.
Nine.
So even though there, there looks like fewer case numbers, the time that you put in down there is significantly more.
Right.
Okay.
Average for a year is seventy-four percent. Any more discussion this year? Thank Lynn for keeping track of these things. She's right on it.
Thank you, Lynn. And are these still going to our town attorney on some kind of regular basis?
I, I can find out.
Yeah, and just please just shoot them up, so he's, who knows when this is gonna, or how it's going to blow up again, or?
We have them.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I think the last thing I have to talk about is, okay, uh, looks like this, the VPA Vermont Police Academy will have a dog trainer, someone to train the dogs and their handlers in July. So that means, uh, Officer Plakis and K-9 Rooster will be in training for twelve weeks to make him a patrol dog. That being said, I have one officer who is injured somewhat, can't wear a vest, takes him off the road. That leaves myself and Teddy from July for twelve weeks that we have been, all the calls in the city, or in the town, excuse me. So I know how close you, you're not getting that, uh, policy, taking care of the best we're at.
Okay.
Just so you know.
And we'll, we've got discussions of similar things on the police committee.
And I do have one other thing I'd like to think of with the police committee reference.
Right.
Something might come up.
Well, I'll do it again. I'm, no, I'm. I, I move that way, hire another police officer for the police department.
I second that.
I, fine, I mean, we've done it before, so.
They can, they can sign the new prop policy when the new policy's ready.
It's a little more to it than that, I'm sure you realize, but motion's been made and seconded. We have funded it, so it's, it's consistent.
I can wait. It's okay. So I just want to say, I'm, I'm kind of under the gun here, because July first has come in, and I think pretty soon, and then it's going to be.
You also have your constables, but you, there's also another thing, if you let the police committee work.
Right.
There's something else as well.
Right. But I.
But if you want to make the motion, we've already authorized it in the budget, so it's, you know, all, any discussion about hiring another officer?
Mostly because if we say now, yeah, hire somebody, they're not starting them out.
No, you're right.
I mean, but your motion is just general, right? It's not about.
Any particular one.
Specific decision.
Hire another.
To hire the candidate they has.
No, that's, well. Well, let's go with hire the off, hire an officer. Okay.
It's fine.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right.
So tell me what that means.
That means, you know, continue your search for the people.
Okay.
And I think it's a, because remember, we also talked about a couple of other things we could do.
Yeah.
And we're waiting for.
I could hire his officer.
CFAC, for example, but we're waiting for an executive director to come in there, so we know that. And there's another opportunity that Ed wants to talk to the police committee about. So let us do the police committee's work.
The way I'm looking at it, is the last employees we've hired for the highway department, Dave has hired, because we told him to hire somebody. So Ed, you're up to hire somebody. And you can use your discretion as the police chief to hire who you want to hire.
There is a process. I hope you appreciate that. And we haven't stepped in and told the highway committee how to run their show, so please.
The highway committee never had an input on it, on the hire.
Respect.
Dave showed up with his new employee, sat right there and said, this is our new highway employee.
Respect that there are a few more moving parts. Okay.
Need to get this ball rolling.
And we have it rolling in about three different directions. Okay, which you know some of. Okay.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All you've done for the police department, I really appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next is John Paul Fagnant.
Hey, wait.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Hey, can I nominate Deputy Chief, can I nominate Deputy Chief Washburn to compete in that eighteen mile an hour footrace? We are representative.
I was thinking more like you, JP. I'd pay to watch that.
So with or without gear, full gear?
Hey, firefighters have to deal with gear in the air.
So it's been a couple of interesting weeks as your health officer. Uh, we had, uh, um, a increase in dog bites. Uh, one was particularly challenging. I had to buy a crate for a dog and alert Paul Williams, our pound keeper, that he may have a guest. A young, uh, person was bit over Dewey Field, and the owner of the dog took off. And the only thing that was obtained was a temporary plate, but we were able to, um, identify the driver of the car and eventually get to the dog owner. But it wasn't before they had to start the rabies protocol for the young boy, which, if you met, are aware, is just a painful process for anybody to have to go through, which is why the first thing we do when we get a dog bite reported to us is we verify the vaccination status of the dog. Um, and sometimes our transient residents aren't the best dog keepers, but in this case, I was totally impressed with the up-to-date records for the dog, and we were able to stop the rabies protocol after the first shot. So that worked out pretty good. Things are perking along pretty good with the public safety building. I'm switching gears here now. No, nothing really to report. We're, we're according to schedule and things are going as planned. I took a ride down to the Cortina Inn today. I'm starting to evaluate their compliance with their agreement with you, as you had requested. One of the tests that I use, because there's universal agreement that if the back doors to the facility were alarmed, then police incidents, police calls, drug calls would get reduced significantly, because people are not going to want to walk in and out the front door in front of the front desk. And I have, since I've been involved with the Cortina Inn, there's been an outstanding order that was included in the agreement with the original owners, that the new owners agreed to abide by, that those back doors be alarmed. Now, in my inspection today, out of the four doors, one was propped open. The other three were closed, but they did not have an alarm bar. So I spoke to a representative down there by the name of Sean Brier. Very nice gentleman, very engaging, but he didn't have any real good news for me as to when they are going to alarm those doors. And to me, that's the canary in the coal mine test for, uh, the good faith of them going forward, because if they really want to help the town in reducing the calls and helping the governments of the population down there, they would alarm those back doors, and that'll stop the drug trade. Or, or have a significant. Or or have a significant decrease in the drug trade because of it.
What are our options?
So that's all I have for you.
We told them, we told them, we told them, we've been patient. What do we do?
I mean, I don't have any jurisdiction over there. As you know, the state took that away from the health officers. Um, I have.
We do under a contract. So if you could get. Get your report on what you found there. Um, get it to Kevin Brown or get it to Bill to get to Kevin Brown. And we can start that route because it is part, it's a contractual agreement. They were going to do those things. And frankly, I think we'll share it with the state.
Yes.
So they'll know.
You know, it really is.
I just don't know which August.
That's the, that's the other one.
Um.
I am having, but they won't do it.
Yeah.
August. So where, so JP, you had um given us a ordinance that um would empower you to do the things you need to do. Um, where are we with that?
We sent that up to Kevin.
Okay, so he needs to step on the gas.
Okay.
Because because once we. Um, get that ordinance in place, now that will authorize you and empower you to do the stuff you need to do down there. And I don't know if we could, but you know, I'd like you to be able to go down there and put a padlock on the door and tell them they all got to go. But that isn't probably going to happen.
Would this alarm issue be covered under that ordinance?
Open up.
Because I mean, it doesn't really sound like a health issue per se.
Well, contractual issue.
It's a contractual issue, but it's also a condition of the health officer that these doors be in place alarmed. To reduce the drug trafficking that's going on in the building and the free for all of people going in and out. So it could be considered a health issue. Considering overdoses.
I have articulated what I, what I think is a sufficient basis for a public health hazard, and that is the drug dealing that goes on in those doors, which. As we know, there's young children down at that facility that it it's just a mess to have drug dealing going on in that environment. It 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 has to be considered a health hazard.
Okay.
What was, what was his name from the state that left his business card? Wanted JP to call him.
Oh, yes. Did you remember?
Was that his name? Oh, yeah, right there.
Was he the local?
Oh, Deputy Secretary.
The Deputy Secretary. Yes, yes, the Deputy Secretary wanted to talk to you, JP, about your troubles um with the state of Vermont and not being allowed to um. Do the enforcement stuff because they said you weren't allowed to. And that's why we're having this issue with the ordinance that we're going to pa- pass in town that will give you that ability. But he wanted to hear your side of that.
Yeah, and I think he was almost, I don't think he quite understood that the state took his powers away.
Yeah, he couldn't believe it.
So I think, yeah, I think you need to talk with him, JP, and figure.
Yeah. I did.
The Health Department is now under Agency of Human Services, right? I think it's he's, I think he's in charge of the Health Department too.
Yeah. What was his title, Bill?
Uh, Deputy Secretary for the Agency of Human Services.
Yeah. Get that information to JP and let him talk with.
I've got the guy's card, so.
Awesome. Yeah, ship his card off to him.
Sorry, JP, you started to say something and I cut you off.
Oh, no worries. I, it's gone. It might come back.
Um, did you hear Joe's? Um, I won't, is his, his possible direction concerning you taking a look at. Um, the Diamond Run Mall. And so similar to what you did for Perkins Road and similar to what our um constable is doing for uh Gleason Road.
So I I have taken a ride around um the Diamond Run Mall and the two times that I did it in the past pay period. Uh, I saw no open areas. All the entries seem secured and I didn't see anything that I could identify as um uh creating a health hazard.
Okay.
Now, I don't know what the condition of the building is inside, but as long as they prevent occupancy of the building, that's not an issue.
What about the blighted property?
Yeah, I was just thinking, the chief mentioned the blighted property ordinance.
But the blighted property ordinance requires the property to be blighted. In comparison to surrounding properties and the mall is isolated.
Uh, he's got the arena back there. That's.
Yeah, the arena is back there.
Arena and the college, you know, and the gym in there and that. So not.
It's right, right. That's a good point.
That was the chief.
So so maybe you just look down that road, JP, and see if you can find something. We can put a little leverage on these people and get something going.
Like graffiti runs right up to.
I want to be very careful how we do that, though.
Yeah.
Because they got a very large bill to tear that down and I don't want the town to own that. You know, so I want to be very careful how we leverage them.
So we don't suddenly lose tax base.
So they don't walk away from it.
And then that's us.
We own the Diamond Run Mall.
From what I understand, we don't want to own the.
Yeah, I want to be very careful how we go about that was the only.
And it is the sinkhole up there, I guess, is getting worse and worse.
Maybe it'll open up big enough and the whole place will just get swallowed up.
I was hoping.
You might can only.
As long as it takes Cortina with it.
Yeah, it's probably where it'll come out. Anyway.
All right.
Um.
Man, some things we probably shouldn't say on camera.
Yes, anything else for our um health officer, clerk of the works of our public safety building?
Thank you for. So JP, um, I want to thank you for the explanation as to why Green Mountain Power installed. A tel- a new power pole on the west side of the property. Um, I I under, I guess I understand the technical and uh structural. Need for that other pole now.
Right, right. I I was glad that they had such a basic explanation that I was able to understand it.
Yeah, but there there's a, they they put a pole on the west side. The power for the building is going in on the east side. So I'm wondering, why do we pay for an extra pole, all this extra three phase to go across there? And the explanation is they couldn't anchor the last pole because it would have been anchored in the parking lot. So they ran the extra three lines and they extended it that one more than that pole is anchored. So keeps everything.
Okay.
So so it's at least a feasible explanation. I'm not sure I like it, but that's why, but anyway, thanks for doing that.
Yep.
Okay, if there's nothing else for JP, thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Thank, thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Um, Barbara Pulling. Yeah, okay.
She's had enough.
Yeah, well, okay. Um, Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Uh, let's see. Uh, the pool has always been slated to be open this coming weekend and we're on track for that. Though we had obviously a lot of people driving down the parking lot this past weekend. Um, we actually had one lady, we were doing, we're still doing work and um one lady actually came in and took her shoes off and was starting to walk down the ladder to go in. And I was painting line on the around the perimeter for our no diving and my other guard that was working was taking the vacuum and cleaning the vacuum. There's nobody else and. She and where I'm like, hey, she's like, oh, aren't you open? Um, yeah, but there there's nobody here and no, we're not. Oh, I thought you were up. No, we're open next week and I apologize for that. We're still cleaning and getting ready. Um, so we had a couple of those and some interesting phone calls from people. But the information is listed on the website when we're opening, if they just look at it, which someone said earlier about reading signs. People don't read signs. Speaking of that, we uh had a quick meeting with um some pickleball people. So before we had talked about not scheduling uh pickleball court time and we're not, but we are going to put in a. Scheduling, it's a scheduler so that they can see who's where and what what have you. And our signs uh will go to the printer next week. That will be actually onsite stating our pickleball rules and that. You know, if you're there and somebody shows up, you play your game, let them play it. Play nice in the sandbox kind of deal. Um, and that just because you sign up to this schedule doesn't mean that you have the court reserved. We're not, we're not doing that. We're just making it more so people can get together um and know where they're playing. So that's being taken care of. The park is doing well. This weather is great. Slowed down the mowing a little bit, but then again, when it rains for ten days, it'll be quite interesting after that. Um, our parties are happening, starting tomorrow. The kids will be in the pool for the end of the year studies program at the middle school. So we'll have kids in the pool starting tomorrow, basically for the rest of the season. So that'll be fun. That'll be my litmus test on how warm or cold the water is. We did paint the inside, the outside of the building. Um, I think it looks fantastic now compared to the tan color that it used to be, for whatever reason, it was tan. It is what we call Rutland Town Pool Blue. And it's pretty odd, about as blue as the flag. Um, and the outside of the building really sticks out and we've done some stuff there. So we're all good to go there. Baseball's wrapping up next week. Um, and then we're into, we have some summer softball. Um, other than that, we're kind of plugging along and uh. It was one thing I talked to you about. No, not that, not that. The other thing. What was it?
Well, sprayers on the list.
What?
Sprayers on the list.
Oh, yeah, that's on the list, if however you want to go about that. Um, I.
You guys already talked about scheduling a meeting.
That's right. We're, that was, that's what it was. We're trying to schedule a rec committee meeting to tidy up some um loose ends from other parts. And then. Um. I I think that's kind of where we stand right now.
You still have some next, uh, will you have money left over in your budget after next?
Um, after, I'll know next week definitely when I look at, once Carrie does it and I get the final spreadsheet, I'll know what my basic end numbers will be. For the last payment. But yes, I do expect to have money left over. Not a lot as usual.
You expect to have the amount of that sprayer left over.
Probably.
So we discussed this, we not, so to avoid making another deduction from the capital improvement fund to do this. I'm going to make a motion, we authorized Mike to buy the sprayer that he proposed to us. I don't remember the dollar amount, but I think it was thirty.
Came into like.
Thirty-two hundred um from this year's budget. And rather than just go through the other thing, that way it'll be a much cleaner, easier to track.
Out of his budget.
Take it out of this budget.
And Sharon seconded. Discussion.
Um, have we heard back from the league?
Oh, what's that?
Got a lengthy.
Yeah, I I I did. I sent it, I sent it to Mike. I I we, it was a, it was a, they have, they had some questions. It wasn't anything outrageous, but they had some questions and wanted to see proof. This is like certifications and whatnot, so.
Able to do all of that, I think we should be okay.
We could at least use it for irrigation.
I went through it, but it got legal and I.
Yeah.
And I got sidetracked. Um, I think we can work through it.
Yeah.
Regardless, I can use it for other things as well.
I'll run it from you.
So is that, is there not, do we need a not to exceed number on that for?
What's that? What we're shipping?
It was thirty-two, I think, like two hundred, I think, because it's freight.
So not to exceed four.
Yeah.
And then it covers if the freight is.
You think you'll have four?
I know. I I will not get paid if that makes sense, so that I have four thousand dollars.
Okay, motion, motion's been made to authorize Mike to purchase this sprayer out of his budget. Um, and at a cost not to exceed four thousand dollars. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. There you go.
Um, I'm just trying to think if there was anything else. I was sitting there and dozing off. Um.
I know.
Sorry, I'm getting older. Uh, no disrespect. Um, we're all set. I I I scanned and then went you. I apologized. I did scan over in Joe's area first and my eyes tracked quickly past Mary. And then they landed there because my lazy eye just ended there. So I do apologize. Um, it was no disrespect.
I think he's still like, you know what?
I thought I saved myself pretty good there, though. We did get the new AD that is in the building. Um, that is all set.
Okay.
Good.
Um, we're all up and running for that and it will stay in the highway for the time when we're not in operation.
Okay.
And then uh.
Good.
Think, I think we're all good. Unless you have anything else for me.
Anything else for our rec director, Mike Rowe?
And I do want to say thank you to JP for the dog bite because that was during a baseball game.
Yeah.
Um, and his quick response and all that. I might have done it before.
I want to thank Sharon for keeping me totally in the loop on that. So it was really good to know.
Yeah, that was really well done by everybody and the boy is doing well, so.
Good.
An unfortunate incident.
It was only five years.
Yeah, and it took quite a chunk. Well, no puncture, puncture.
Yeah.
The only other thing I want to bring up and I'll talk about it in committee too, um, is at some point. We have to remove. The lights at Dewey.
Oh, boy.
At some point, or they're going to fall on someone. I don't know. I mean, I don't want to cut the pole and then deal with glass pickup. I can call out to uh Green Mountain Power and maybe they can come in and at least.
Adamantly declined any.
There we go.
Really?
So.
Just to take them down?
Well, if we can just get the 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 light parts off, then we can chop the pole down.
Local trees. I'm trying to think, Mike.
It's a, it's, it's normal, it's not normal bucket.
We had two at the mission and I can't remember. It was one of, I think it was the mob bell boys went down with their bucket truck.
Yeah, that it's way, way beyond the reach of a bucket.
I don't know if, what you want to call it.
Call Tom at Trees.
Ours go, ours went to the third floor.
The McCullough Brothers or even LaFosse's, they were getting a bigger.
Bigger one.
A bigger one.
But I would, I would talk either Brad or Cold Trees.
At least Brad's an electrician.
If I can get the lights down, I mean, I can have the electrician come and shut the power off. But I'm just in fear that they're.
Friends GMP won't do that for their community thing.
You know, it's funny.
They're using the crane truck to send a monument downtown last week. Like they can't come take some lights down.
You know, you know who put those lights up?
You did.
Uh, CD did. I think my cousin had something to do with that. And I think they originally went over and put the lights up for the town.
I think they were user-friendly back in the day.
You know, it was a lot different back. But but you could call Tom at Trees.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will call a couple of different people. I'll get in touch with.
They have, you know. If Brad doesn't have, you know, like if you want an electrician, you may be able to work with. Trees and and because I'm pretty sure they've got a one really big bucket truck.
I think that I just need the electrician to shut off the power in the building and disconnect them. Then they can, we can cut through whatever they need to cut through.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's, and they just, it's a little bit of work taking the crossfires and they're going to have to run them down with a something, but.
Right, because.
And as far as the poles go.
We can just cut them down like you're cutting down a tree.
Yeah, but then you're still going to have them. You don't want them to be better now. It'd be better to pull out, but you can do it either way.
Anyway, I just wanted to put them in the radar because that.
But that's, those are a couple of places I checked with.
Okay, I will take care of that. Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Come down to the swim.
Yeah. All right, Bill Sweet.
Me.
You're welcome. We have stairs.
I had this for you, Biffster.
Language.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's the same.
It is a shell.
It's the same statue that everyone, we had the board vacancy and Kevin said this has like forthwith, which means you have, like, it's, it's the exact, it's.
The same language. This is for the Lister position. Okay.
So we're obligated to.
Yes.
We got to fill and then we put it on the ballot.
It's a board obligation.
I, and I believe it's because it's an elected official.
Yeah, it's, it's, and it's a, it's a board, it's a select board duty.
Um. Geez, we got rules. We got duties.
Uh, the only thing left on the agenda is to check with the department heads to confirm townwide celebration attendance.
They're all gone.
They're all gone. So I did that well, don't you think?
That's the next meeting again.
Yeah, maybe put them towards the top.
Sharon, is there anything we can do to help on townwide celebration?
No, all of the meat is ordered. Um, we're not going to have the Mark Foley cart. He's no longer doing it.
They responded to my message asking if they can come saying we've retired and then promptly posted on Facebook. They, they responded to my message asking if they can come, saying we've retired and then promptly posted on Facebook, we've retired, I'm like so uh we have, we've already come up with an alternative plan.
Okay, great.
The flyers are done.
Wonderful.
They're ordered, yeah.
We copied the one you did last year, we just changed the
I think Bill did it last year.
We, I ordered, I ordered all of the meat, um and he said he thought that we got the sa- uh the peppers and onions, um they were coming frozen bag.
They do.
Yep.
And he thought it was two huge bags.
No, but it was, it was it was several smaller bags.
Okay.
Uh peppers and onions?
Um it's going to be, I I thought it was, he said a few things have gone up, but more things have gone down in price. He was really good, last year he donated the ketchup and the mustard, I think he's gonna do the same thing. Um Mike is taking care of the soda, the ice cream, he's gonna order from the company, he gets like ice cream sandwiches and stuff. So that we at least have that, cuz we don't have the other option. I ordered, they ordered the same amount from last year, the only thing they didn't have written down was the veggie burgers, he couldn't figure out how many, so I said, I don't think a ton of people eat veggie burgers, but as long as we have them.
A, a package is fine, we have more than one package, but one package is fine, yeah.
So um Procter gas has smoke, four small tanks.
Yay.
Uh have you heard anything more on the um book bike, I know they're gonna be here, but I don't know.
They'll be here, probably won't be Randall, I did ask when I was in the library the other day who it might be, I know they're aware of it. And will, I think Dave has to get the highway guys to transport it.
Okay.
They had a person, we had to move it.
Um and the person that I've been in contact with is Brian Kamuta and he's been super.
He's wonderful.
Yeah, he really has, Mike is gonna pick the stuff up. It was gonna be on Friday, but the school is making them go to some kind of a whatever.
In service.
So, well, it isn't in service, but so he's gonna pick it up Thursday, he's gonna call Brian, so it's ready on Thursday. So, I mean, everything is pretty much in order there, not much and and um Bill has gotten hold of all the different people that usually come, I don't think we got a negative.
I haven't gotten any, I've got no declines except for the ice cream, uh we got a couple that are still waiting to confirm, but
So did they sell the cart, I mean, I could
I don't know, I don't know. It was, it was
Please.
It's probably still in his little red barn there.
It's probably sitting over there.
No.
What was the date on this again?
August twenty fourth. Yep.
Make sure I get that out here.
Yep.
So, sounds good, thank you.
Okay.
It's better to get it out of the way than
Yep.
Yes.
Good progress, uh the, you have the letters on your desk, Mary, for the scholarship awards for Rutland High School?
Oh, yeah, I put them
Okay, the other two I sent letters to them inviting them to the next board meeting, so we could present the words to them here. I've not, I've not heard from them yet, but I've, I've sent the letters inviting them.
Okay.
Uh so that's out there, um Did you like the color coded agenda, did that help, once you, once you sussed out my
When, when you print it off, cuz I had my packet over here, so I printed it off, it, 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 you kind of lose the color, yeah, but that's okay.
Did it work for the one that was in the packet?
It was fine, it was fine.
Well, cuz I was, I was looking at, I'm like, people, there are people of different things, I'm like, well, what if I just put color, so we'll, we'll see, I'll try, I'll keep trying that again, see if, see if, see if it works. Uh the electrical upgrade work is well underway, they did uh all the trenching today, they dug the hole, laid the conduit and filled it all back in, patched all back up and uh and that was F A S excavating, did that. Um so it was good, I, and, yeah.
Row road, manhole, they did that work.
Yeah, they did all the work for us, say, and I, when, when I found out who was doing it, I was like, oh, okay, yep, yep, uh so
There's two different
There, the, the new panel is mounted, they've got that access panel open underneath the one of the sub panels, so you can see up the old staircase to the side. There's actually a pipe leaking in there, so we gotta, we gotta, we gotta address, but um they're, they've already made some good progress, Thursday and Friday this week, the building will be closed and dark, there will be no power uh as they change everything over, the transfer switch and the meter socket, it's all here, ready to go, it's all state, uh there is
That notice is on our website.
It's everywhere, it's on the board out front, it's everywhere.
Aware that when the power goes out, that generator's gonna come on?
No, it's not, they're, 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 I'm gonna get them the key tomorrow, so they're gonna disable the generator, we called the alarm company, we have, we are, we have covered our bases. Uh and I called the alarm company, who by the way is on our contact list, and it was Frank Chaffee and Joseph Yalas, we changed that information, so that's no longer there. Um but they're, they're progressing along, uh there, there was a feed from the panel to the ceiling above, above the staircase over there, which was a junction box, which is not going to pass inspection. Um and shouldn't have been left the way it was, but be that as it may, uh they're gonna have to mitigate that or will pass inspection by the fire safety, so they're, they're gonna take care of that as part of this, but it's gonna be a little bit more. Um let's see, uh Stephanie you're, 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 you're the last one. Um Joe got me his stuff today, so we're, we're, we're about two weeks behind at this point on that, so Oh yeah, I, I promised Stephanie we will do better at the next deadline, uh but, but uh it, sooner is better.
Oops.
Um so she, she, she needs that as soon as she can, so not only the, the numbers, but comments too, I gotta get Dave to add some comments, you know, any comments, so um let's see, last couple of things, um re- received a email which you have on your desk from Irving Oil.
Oh, yeah.
We have not received our annual letter from Johnson Energy yet, I don't know if it's coming or not, but we received a offer from Irving Oil for uh heating oil and propane for the town this year, uh and there also is and a caveat, if, if we use their service, there is an employee discount offered to town employees for their own services, so.
Do we usually put out a request for bids?
No.
We don't.
Nope, Johnson Energy is a preferred vendor and we've, we've received their letter and voted on it and moved on.
Well, since we have another, we probably should get
Should probably check it every once in a few years.
We should um request bids.
So this, this did specify the state of Vermont negotiated variable rate, which is the state, I'm assuming the state contract pricing, this just came in just uh just recently, so
Yeah.
Interesting that they came to us, you know.
Yeah.
Obviously somebody's paying attention.
Yeah.
Uh well, the rep, the, the rep is actually on the top right hand corner of the screen there, um so, yeah.
Thank you for sending this.
A poor guy sat through all this.
He did, he did.
Okay.
He got an education.
Yep. Uh so, uh you, you, we, we put something together if you like, what, what would you like, what would you like to do?
We should, we should get something out to invite people to
Good, yeah.
Bid.
We always did.
Yeah.
And then the last couple of years, we didn't.
Well, it's been more, more than a couple, cuz we've never used anything but since I've been here, so.
Okay, so that's
Okay.
Be the appropriate way that we make a
Problem, should we, we should word that as price over rack, cuz that's how we normally
I think that's kind of what it was addressed at in here too.
That's how they do it, we've always just put it out as we're town rolling, accepting bids on fuel oil and propane. Yeah, actually, we've never bid to propane, we've only done the fuel oil.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have, we have
The, the hard part.
We have propane, so
We're gonna have two now, we're with a new station.
Well, no, we've, we've always had propane, but
Right, but we're gonna have two accounts, cuz
Oh, yeah.
You know, we, the, the central and station has been since twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
Prior to that, everything was fuel.
So it sounds like we should put out two different bids or requests for bids, one for propane, one for fuel oil.
And it should be that cost plus or price over that, that way we can compare them.
Yeah.
Or
I will.
They don't offer that.
Yeah.
Cuz, cuz some of the, in the past, we've got a couple and they didn't offer the uh cost over rack price.
That's fine, I will, I'll put something together and we'll, 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 we'll have a little bit of time on that one.
Yeah.
Uh also on your desk, uh a information on the National Opioid Settlement. Uh we are eligible to receive some funds. Um not a substantial amount, but still some, nonetheless, there are some guidelines for how it can be spent, um the documents are about seven hundred pages long, so I neglected to print them. Um if we want to accept the money, we have to create an account to he, we have to create, we have to log into their system to say, yes, we really want the money, so um it's, there's two different ones. And it's about twenty one hundred dollars.
Twenty one?
There's two, there's two different ones, there's two different, yeah, there are two different pools and they're not all at once and, and it's there's a whole, I, I
Restricted is the use of the money, and does the League of Cities and Towns give us any guidance on this?
I, I, nothing's come from that, nothing that I've seen relates to this, this, this comes directly from um there's a, there's a, a, a organization that sends, sends this directly, so I, I can forward you the information so you can look. It was a little more than I was able to digest, given the, the size of it, so
If we got this money, could we fund some drug education?
I don't think actually you can, no, there, there, there were some unusual, like, you really can't do that, like kind of things, it was like there was some, you like can't find like policing efforts, I think there, there's, there's some unusual, like
Is it worth it?
Well, and that's, that's the thing, so
Gonna spend all kinds of hours.
If we're trying to stop drug addiction and opioid misuse, then education would be at the top.
I would think so too, so
To do by drugs.
I can I can, I can send you, I can forward you the, the information so you can, you can see it, um but that's, that's what we have.
Twenty one hundred bucks, I mean, if we could do something valuable with it, like
I will, something, let's say something easy.
My first thought was the dare program, like, that would, that would make sense, but
Yeah.
But you can't.
I, I, so I, well, I don't, I, I remember there was some talk about this, I, I've heard on the news about different things, so I, I have not taken a deep dive into this, or I've had too many other things going on, so um I, I
Why isn't Rutland City on this?
They, I, I took, well, I just pared it down, but they were, they're getting like twenty one thousand dollars.
Thousand.
But there, there's formulas and, and they were on, they were on the the three payment schedule, they, they, they're there, I mean, I, I feel like I could forge everything, the whole spreadsheet is there, I just pared it down, just focus it for us, cuz, yeah, they're, they're getting, they're getting a lot more, but
This is the administrator, so if there's actually something like a website that explains a little more, I'm not sure if the administrator is the best one. I guess they're gonna make it deliberately vague.
Yeah, well, we can, well, I think, I think it was deliberately vague to kind of just say like
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it really didn't seem like there was a lot of reporting. So
Okay.
Um so I, I can send you the information if you like, and then we can decide if you want to
Okay. It looks like we've got a little time to decide.
Yes.
Um we wanna dispute our allocation this July fifteenth.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Did I hear Kurt say something about disputing?
One percent, we got ten percent with the city.
Yeah, I mean, we got, we got more homeless than the city does.
Well, but it's not, it's, it, but it, it's because it's, it's Walmart and C V S and because they're, I, I think because they're in the city, they have a bigger percentage, so, yeah.
We only, we only have anniversaries.
So it's, it's based upon the, that, that, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we should get into training.
And that's why Pitts, that's why Pittsfield gets screwed with thirty bucks.
I don't, I don't think
They sell some molten at the general store over there.
I don't think that's, I don't think you should get into their formulas, um so
You're bad. By the way, I, I do want to say that uh Kurt and I have worked together on the townwide celebration and I checked with him to see what he thinks and we've, but it's only fair to say that Curtis worked handily and with me.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh and the last thing is in the packet, the uh letter for Jack.
I asked uh Bill to draft something thanking Jack for his service to the town and expressing our understanding.
We need a motion or do we just sign?
Um I think we can all just sign it if this is okay, people okay with this?
Yes, you have the colored copy.
Yes, she does have a perfect
He told me, Mary, cuz I was telling him about things. He's also not here.
In two years.
So
Now it's going on three, so they're coming here.
Okay, did we cover everything and?
That is all the other items.
Perfect.
It was a personal committee meeting, but there's really no one to speak of.
Yeah, the personnel committee continued, well, actually, we worked on the um two things that you voted on earlier, so we do, we need to schedule a police committee meeting and we should do a fire committee meeting, Sharon, and you have
Yep, just call me at home so I can look at my calendar.
Okay, fair enough. There you go.
I guess I gotta sign it now.
Okay, um so I think the only thing left, we've got the committee reports, we just sort of briefly did select board project list, there it is, um
On going.
Yeah, well, Bill reported on the town hall, building improvements, transfer station toilet actually came up because we saw it
Yeah.
Moved, um
So Kurt's working on
Pocket Park Barber did have something on the Pocket Park.
The archaeological study, but initially Green Mountain Powers to circle back on it, so
Wow, all right, um
Yeah, I need to
Rooftop solar is public cert- safety building is moving along Service Road, we're just waiting for north to give us the information, the last bit.
Put a manhole on the top.
And I think we're okay, so um any other new items?
I have a question for our highway committee.
We'll have an answer for you.
Maybe, maybe. Wow, where do things stand with that whole sewer thing and the looking with the camera and whatnot? Town, the
All for
By the car wash and
We're waiting on them. The car wash submitted a, uh an invoice, they had their line clean, they said it was pretty bad, but it's been cleaned and they are asking again to be removed from their obligation.
We're gonna ask Dave if he could look at the line from Denny's.
From Denny's. Yeah.
Yeah, and that hasn't happened.
I don't think
I doubt it.
But if, yeah, cuz I think the recommendation of the committee and Dave was that once the line from the car wash to that manhole that is shared by the two was cleaned and inspected and okay, that we would release them from the agreement. And then Denny's would still be covered, would still be obligated to do their portion, because
Well, we gotta deal with the whole For half.
Huh?
For half, is what it says.
Right. It was a shared expense.
I mean, do we, so who pays for the work that the guy, they paid for?
They paid for it, yes.
Cleaning and inspecting, right.
And their portion is done. Yep, they cleaned their line from there, from the car wash to the, to the junction.
And the junction is where the two lines come together, so
Right.
Anything now
But the agreement was for Denny's to pay for half of cleaning under Route Seven.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so that, so, so it wasn't, it wasn't to Kevin, I haven't heard back from him on it, about rewording it or reworking it, but
Yeah, that little list you did a couple of weeks ago to him, these are the things we're waiting on, could you regenerate that, please?
I, I have it readily available.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, so we have previously voted to go into executive session, if there's nothing else, we'll go into executive session. Yeah, no, it's there, I just didn't hit the arrow, okay, it is ten oh seven. Uh we're out of executive session, do we have any motion?
Um I made the motion that we approve the amount of one thousand dollars to Kerry um for additional works related to the elections, the extra election work.
Is there a second?